I'd like to call this December 19th, 2022, meeting of the Concord Select Board to order. And thanks for your attendance this evening. We have a very full agenda, so let's get right to it with the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda as printed in the packet.
Well, actually, I think we got an update in our.
Right, including the update.
Yeah, so the packet, I don't think.
The update has a gift acceptance. Do you have that? Gift acceptance from Concord Carlisle Community Chest of 19 Main Street, Unit 2, in the amount of $5,000 for Concord Recreation School Year Childcare Scholarships.
Okay, thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Change to the minutes. Is that a good time?
Yes, this is the time to do it.
Great. The only, I have a small change. Whenever Peggy Briggs, the Chair of the FinCom is mentioned, her address is given as Concord Green.
Oh.
Which is at the, I live in Concord Green and.
Right.
Peggy Briggs, and she's not the Chair.
She lives on Elm Street.
She lives on Elm Street.
Okay.
So.
Yeah.
253 Elm Street.
You don't have it.
Other than that, I'm fine.
No.
I also have a correction for the November 7th minutes.
Yes.
And perhaps someone already caught this.
I did.
Page four in the packet. Well, it was page 20, where it talks about the Middle School Building Committee vote for an additional 115 million.
Oh, whoops. Yeah, so it's for an additional 12.2 million, that would equal 115 million total budget. Nice catch. Okay.
Okay, so move to approve the consent agenda with those amendments.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Now to the town managers.
I have one more thing.
Oh, yes.
I would like to read a proclamation that's in the consent calendar honoring Police Chief Joseph F. O'Connor upon his retirement after eight years of service to the Concord community. Whereas Chief O'Connor began his distinguished career in law enforcement in 1986 with the Town of Dennis, and Chief O'Connor rose through the ranks of law enforcement for the MBTA Transit Police Department from patrol officer to superintendent in chief from 1990 through 2014, whereas Chief O'Connor began his career in Concord when he was appointed police chief in 2014. Whereas Chief O'Connor has demonstrated an outstanding commitment to public safety through leadership, modern policing, and community engagement. And whereas Chief O'Connor has been a champion of modern and progressive causes in law enforcement for decades and serves as a model leader in the law enforcement community. Now, therefore, we as the Select Board of the Town of Concord, Massachusetts, on behalf of Concord's employees, committees, community partners, and citizens, do hereby recognize Chief Joseph O'Connor with deep gratitude for his countless contributions to our community and his commitment to ensuring Concord's safety. We extend our personal best wishes in his well-deserved retirement.
Here, here.
Here, here.
Okay, now to the town managers' report.
Okay, thank you and good evening, and thank you to the board for the proclamation on behalf of the chief. His last day of service is this Thursday, and he will be missed by everyone in the organization. He's brought so much to the Town of Concord. We're happy for him in his retirement. We have been very busy this past month. You can see in the weekly report, this is the time of year that we do, a lot of our departments are doing annual inspections. The fire department has been out doing inspections of businesses to ensure that egress paths are clear and free of hazards. They found, actually, they found no findings on their inspections, but it was a great opportunity for the inspectors to connect with business owners and update contact information. Fire department was also out at Emerson Hospital at their facilities, both on campus and off campus. The fire department was also involved in training, particularly with the police Tesla vehicle. I've talked to you before about the batteries, how batteries are posing a new hazard to the fire department in fighting fires, so this was a great training opportunity for them. Chief O'Connor and Chief Judge attended the Concord Business Partnership Meeting this past month to talk about what's going on in both of their departments, and they did note that there was substantial discussion about cell service. And we do expect to bring the topic of cell service to you in January with some additional information and hope to get a solution to the service issues in town discussed and hopefully get something implemented early in 2023. Our two school resource officers, detectives Cara Palladino and Derek Rodriguez, attended a one-day school resource officer conference in Sturbridge. Our Public Works Department, and particularly Fleet Maintenance, has been busy going through all of the vehicles and readying them for the winter operations, and we've had two response events to snow and ice operations already this season. Our Facilities Department has moved to 37 Knox Trail. That is the building that we own adjacent to the school bus depot. It's actually in Acton. Facilities had been occupying the first floor over at 55 Church Street. That is, I'd like to say, one of our nicest municipal buildings. It's great for customer access, great parking over there, and so we've decided to move, really essentially, a back-of-the-house operation out of that space, and we'll be looking to make better use of that space and have offices that have more customers over there. We haven't decided who's going over there yet, but we do hope in the beginning of 2023 to make some adjustments. And then, I know you have a very full agenda, so I could go on, but maybe I'll stop and see if you have any questions.
Any questions for the town manager? Okay. Just in my chair's remarks, first of all, welcome back to our town manager for a much-needed break. Also, just, I wanted to remark on the report of threat of physical harm against the town's superintendent of schools, and just to state that we really need to have in the performance of the school's duties and in the discussion of important topics, civil discourse that is not based upon threats, and that we really stand behind our police department as well as just citizens in general to operate in a peaceable manner. So now with that, I'd like to move to the vote to approve the hours of operation for West Village Tavern. So I don't know if we need anyone from the applicant. I think this is really administrative matter. Yeah, so Shannon, any remarks on this?
No, Richard's here. Do you guys do have any questions?
Okay.
I was very pleased by the hours that they proposed, and I hope we approve them because they will be one of the few places that's available to go after our meetings and still be open.
Okay. All right. Well, with that, any other remarks from the board members?
Well.
Yes, Lynn.
I'm also pleased to see you're finally walking up to opening up. I just have a question about the Sunday hours. Will you be serving alcohol on Sunday for the hours as posted?
From noon, from noon to close.
Okay, and is that, just refresh my memory, is that the same hours that you're open for?
No, food starts at 10:00.
Correct. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Post hours of operation for West Village Tavern as included in the board's packet.
Second? Do you have a second?
Second.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Thou.
When are you opening?
Tomorrow night.
Very good.
All right.
One night too late.
So, that's right. So, next item on the agenda is a Common Victular license application for New Leaf Cafe at 561 Virginia Road. Do we have anyone representing the applicant?
Oh, on Zoom.
Okay, on Zoom. Please identify yourself. Can unmute? Okay, there we see, I see a hand up. Can you unmute yourself? I'm still seeing a hand up, but a muted line. Oh, it briefly unmuted and went back. Well, can you go ahead and just represent the applications terms?
Sure. Thank you. Okay, so I believe Lori Brambles is with us via Zoom, but so she is submitting an application for corporate chefs at 561 Virginia Road tonight for a Common Vic application. They have been operating there since 2022, but unfortunately during the turnover of new ownership, a Common Vic license fell through the cracks. I was able to figure this out this year when I was doing the annual renewal process, so tonight we were just presenting the application.
Right.
To be active from now to the 31st and for 2023.
Okay, so this is a corrective.
Yes.
License application. So any concerns or questions for the applicant? All right, then, can I have a motion?
Move to approve the Common Victular application for New Leaf Cafe as included in the board's packet.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So we were able to work with the immutable. So now, let's talk about the Massachusetts 250th American Revolutionary Revolution Anniversary Commission update from Mike Lawson.
Thank you and good evening. Mike Lawson, 1695 Lowell Road, Concord's representative to the Special Commission to celebrate the 250th anniversary of the American Revolution. The commission has met four times, first in March and most recently just last week. The commission's focus is on inclusion, diversity, and highlighting events and lesser-known activities that took place around the April period that we saw right here. The commission is organized around the four subcommittees, one on education, one on outreach and marketing, the third on diversity and inclusion, and the fourth on finance. I'm a member of the finance subcommittee, which is chaired by Senator Barrett. At our last meeting, we heard updates from three of the subcommittees. Diversity and inclusion is working to develop narratives for various stakeholders such as business, slaves, loyalists, indentured servants, minutemen, and they're also conducting a whole series of interviews to try to broaden the story of what happened during that time in this place. The outreach and marketing subcommittee is issuing a letter to all historical commissions, including ours, inviting their participation in these activities that will be put together. The education subcommittee is just getting started, and they've just subdivided themselves into sort of like K through six, seven through 12, college and adult education, and they're also working to contact folks outside of Massachusetts who might be interested in these activities as well. The fourth subcommittee, finance, has not met, and that's because there are some outstanding issues that need to be resolved. We're raising money how? Through appropriations or basic fundraising? What will be the uses of the funds? So the very fundamental questions that haven't been resolved yet. You might know that the Senate and the House passed a bill authorizing $250,000 to support the startup of this process, but in the language of that, the money gets funneled through REV250, which is an organizational part of the Mass Historical Society. So we're still trying to work out how that exactly is going to work and how we'll be able to move forward on this. The first major event of all of this that's being looked at through this lens is the Tea Party, and that's happening next December, December 16th, and it's going to be quite an event. There will be producing something that will give you more insight into that in a little while, but just as a heads up. Based on what I've heard from the 250th Commission, I have a few thoughts that I'd like to leave with you. First, my suggestion is that you begin to, if you haven't, and I apologize if I just don't know, prepare a budget for this event, and you might even consider whether or not there could be articles at the regular town meetings to put aside certain amount of money you know that was very expensive for the town and for the National Park in '75 when the Journal for was here, and you heard about all of that. I would suggest to Mr. Dane that the chairs of your subcommittees that overlap with the commissions might contact them to get more insight into what they're doing. I have recommended to the commission that they invite, it would be Mr. Dane, I suppose, but somebody from Concord and somebody from Lexington to come to the commission to tell them what we have planned. As I said before, they're interested in sort of expanding the net of what happens around the time of April 19th. But the reality is, when the people come, they're going to come here and they're going to come to Lexington. And so independent of other activities that are going to happen, this is going to be a focal point for that. And I think they need to understand more depth, you know, what kind of activities and the depth of the planning that's going in through Mr. Dane's committee. So I've let them know that, and I'm hopeful that they will take advantage of that recommendation. Finally, the commission will reach out to the incoming governor, Laura Healy, to gain her support for the workings of the commission. And in fact, there was talk of trying to request on her budget that's going to be prepared just in January, there to be a significant item in the budget that would be set aside for helping to support these kind of events. So that's my update on the commission. We aren't meeting again until, the full committee is not meeting again until, I think, February, but I suspect the finance committee will be meeting soon after the first of the year.
Okay.
And I'm happy.
Thanks, Mr. Lawson.
Happy to.
Also, I do want to note that our board will be discussing the potential warrant article to put on annual town meeting later in this meeting.
About that.
So that is planned. So questions for Mike Lawson? Yes?
Quick question, and thank you very much for serving as our rep on this. Very exciting that it's coming up so soon. So just a quick question on this first event, the Tea Party. Where is that going to take place?
Probably Boston.
That's my question. You know.
Your place, Terry.
Yeah, I'm like, whoa, wait a minute.
There's going to be a lot of events, but there's going to be a very special event at the reproduced ship down in.
Not in Concord and Lexington, right?
Not that I've heard, not in Walden Pond and.
Who's providing the tea?
Yep, they are getting tea from all over the country. Yeah.
Not from the UK?
I don't, no, I don't know.
Thought they might donate some. They donated it before.
Well, mentioning that, though, one of the things that has come up is also inviting dignitaries. So I haven't gotten that far yet, but I'm certain that the president will be invited, and I suspect there'll be an invitation extended to somebody in the royal family, but that'll probably be done by the governor.
Wow, okay. I don't know if that's the particular that I would want to have the royals be at.
Mike, thank you. When will things start happening around here?
Excuse me?
When will activities start happening here within Concord and Lexington and?
There is, my sort of closing remark should be, carry on. I don't think they are going to plan anything for Concord. I think we'll go about our business. There may be some, we may be able to involve them, they may want to do, but they're not going to say, you know, oh, we're coming on the 18th and, you know, we're going to have a little parade or something.
We're planning to start events with the National Park in '74.
Yep, sure.
And to plan events that are key to the anniversaries of the historical events, but not necessarily in the cognate year. So we might celebrate certain things that happened in earlier years, like the Boston Massacre or things like that, on their anniversary dates, but not in a 250th year.
Yeah. The only way their events will impact on events that we plan here is if some dignitary gets, if the president's coming.
Okay.
Or somebody from the royal family, and the same has happened last time, and then there'll be, you know, a very large contingent of National Park personnel and other security people.
I could imagine almost a reenactment of the march, you know, from Boston all the way out and then back, or an ultra marathon to, you know, commemorate this or.
'75, they marched from Lexington into Concord.
Uh huh. And that's relatively easy. They should have to start with wet leather boots at midnight at Leachmere.
That'll get them out.
And start to go from there. That would be a good reenactment. But there isn't an idea that they'll plan, so that's the potential, I would imagine, for a state organization is to plan a kind of a pan activity.
There has been no talk, other than the Tea Party event in '23, there has been no talk of specific events. I think what they're trying to do is market, market the events that are happening. They're trying to expand, get people involved in this that aren't normally involved in it. So I've heard not a single idea about, you know, let's march.
Yeah, and then the other thing, of course, is with the funding, that it would be, I mean, I understand that it was a financial burden back in 1975, but, you know, it would be unfortunate that it would become a major financial burden for us to be the hosts of this essentially party in 2025, that you would think that certainly will be benefits for the town's, you know, reputation, I guess, possibly for business, but it depends on the amount of expenditure that we have and the amount of disruption. So just help that we could get in the areas of security and, you know, transportation resources and all kinds of assets, resources that could help us.
That's what's been on the mind of the finance committee is.
Yeah.
How do we put forward a financing plan that is going to, you know, use money to do the kind of expansion that the commission is interested in fostering, but also recognizes the reality of the celebrations and where the density of people and expenses are going to be.
Yeah.
That's, you know, so.
That's what I would hope.
How about imposing a tax on tea?
Good thought, Henry. I'll bring it up at the next meeting, and I'll make sure to mention you said it.
Please let me know when the finance committee is going to meet, because I think probably Rick and I would.
That'd be fine. Obviously, they're open meeting, so sure, that'd be great.
And we won't say anything.
That's, yeah, sure.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Lawson?
Thank you.
I have one quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
Is the, the local area towns, are they still meeting?
Thank you. No, but after, after the last meeting we had last week, Susie Berry, who is a member of the Select Board in Lexington, and I were on a call with Senator Barrett, and one of the outcomes of that call was a suggestion that we, and we're doing it, putting together what I guess we're euphemistically calling the Battle Road Caucus. So we're getting all of the folks who are representing towns along the battle road who are on the commission to meet and see if we can, you know, have a common purpose and view as we start to think about these financial issues. So thank you for.
That's terrific, yeah.
Thanks. All right, thanks very much.
Go.
All right, now, we're a little ahead of schedule, which is excellent, because I think we can use the time, and I think we need to go call in the members of the DEI Commission, who I see are outside.
Well, my colleagues are.
Oh, yes, and if you were here just for a license application or something, you don't want to stay and witness the rest of our meeting, you're free to go. It's.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, yeah.
When did he say they were going to open?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow night.
Tomorrow?
Tomorrow night. It's too bad we can have a special party tonight, you know?
Yeah, it's true.
Do you want to do it now? What if some people aren't coming for another 20 minutes? And we're scheduled.
No, I think that we have a quorum.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. We're getting there. Hi, Rose, this is impressive. Rose is due any minute, so we hope she can make it through the meeting. So in fact, do you have a quorum present? I see, yeah, you do. Do you want to call?
We're going to ask our members to introduce themselves, but we want to start with a gift.
Oh, a gift?
Wow. So gee, maybe you could explain the, why don't you introduce yourself, and this was really your idea.
Okay, sure. Gee, I'm a supporter and I'm a DEI Commission member. So, yeah, during our last DEI Commission meeting, my suggestion is that DEI is really a work of human connection. So we really appreciate our Select Board member here to volunteer to be a public servant, to serve the Town of Concord, and we have a very humble gift, and in the spirit of holiday season. So this is really coming from DEI of Concord.
Okay.
Thank you for selecting us, thank you for giving us opportunity to be of service.
Oh, well, thank you for serving.
And note the diversity in the boxes.
With colors.
Yeah.
So I'm like, what should I, what can I do? So basically, I have some trees from all of the world. So it's Chinese candy, there's Chinese, so a little taste of the, of the country.
Wow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gee. Thank you, Gee.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, special ones for the town manager. All right.
Are we supposed to open these now, or?
Well, it depends on how hungry you are.
Yeah, if you guys are hungry and have low blood sugar, it might be a good idea.
Maybe give you guys a little more energy, so.
I heard her say there's tea in there.
So we were planning to start just by having the commission members introduce themselves, if that makes sense.
Yeah, sure.
Yep, my name's Josh Lee, 65 Everett Street, and I am the co-chair of the commission.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Rose Crassley, also co-chair of the DEI Commission, and I reside at 79 Hillcrest Road.
My name is Andrea Fonserada, and I'm also a commission member, and I'm the clerk, and I reside on, at 41 Commonwealth Avenue.
Could our other commission members just introduce themselves?
Jimmy Jimbellis, 303 Commonwealth Avenue.
Robert Monroe, 1400 Lowell Road.
And we also have a number of unofficial, yet supportive, members of our DEI kind of group that's been very supportive here tonight. You know, what we wanted to start with was a quick overview of the memo that I hope everybody had a chance to look at. The memo reflects, you know, over a year of work that the commission's been doing, meeting with the public to hear about their experience in Concord, doing. meeting, meeting with the public to hear about their experience in Concord, doing targeted research on best practices in other New England towns that are very similar to Concord. They reflect a couple of first insights from the DI Community Survey that's out in the field right now. We have 230 responses so far, so it's, it's going well for, for this time of year. And, and it reflects a lot that the collective wisdom and knowledge of, of the Commission. So if everyone has it in front of them. Raise. Does anyone have a?
No, it seems like someone needs to go unmute and it's on Zoom. Okay.
What we started with was really the original charter and relating back the work of the Commission to the 22 and 23 goals that the Select Board laid out. And we wanted to highlight number three in particular, which is this research process to understand best practices of DNI, and then come back to you with, with recommendations. And that's really the focus of this. There are other goals in here that we think are probably going to take a little more time. And so if you look at the table that we've created, what we've laid out is what we think the key items for the, for the town are over the next, over the next year. And we've put some preliminary time windows around when those would happen. Some of that's going to be dependent on, on funding, whether, whether all the work on this, on these recommendations can be achieved. So just kind of quickly to summarize for all of you, and then we'll, we'd be happy to discuss and take questions. The first part of this is really the completion of the baseline assessment. You know, where are we today finishing the survey? We'd also like to conduct stakeholder interviews and small group meetings. We've been able to do some of that in the context of the DI Commission meetings, but these would be more targeted and getting out to people who don't have the time to come to a Commission meeting. And then we, we think that would complete a lot of our baseline data gathering. And from that, we would be able to say, here's a more specific roadmap of the things we, we want to do to address the findings from the survey and, and the rest of the focus groups. We also think the hiring of a, of a full-time, dedicated DEI staff member is pretty important. We put Q3 as the target timing there. I know there's budget issues, and typically you need a warrant to have a new position, but we think this work will be all the more effective if there is a dedicated staff person, both helping get the work done, but also shaping what the plan is. So if there's any way to move that up sooner, we think that would be a very good thing for, for all concerned. The town of Belmont in particular has pioneered this idea of an incident reporting system. You know, they had a couple of pretty bad incidents in their school system and on the streets, racial incidents. And we spent a fair bit of time interviewing people in Belmont about how they, what they did to respond, and the idea of a transparent, formalized process for submitting information about a racial incident, showing how that would be investigated, and then sharing publicly what the conclusion was, was very powerful for them in, in, you know, having transparency into what was going on and raising the level of trust. So we recommend that there be a two-part incident reporting system, much like they have in Belmont, one for incidents in schools, one for the public at large. We can share with you the example form that they use. It's pretty simple. We don't think that would be particularly cumbersome to put in place here. We recommend completing the DEI audits. Those have been done in some places across the town, not in others. They're really completing the baseline assessments. There are many good third-party firms out there. There's one out of MIT that conducts, conducts DEI audits. And then, and then targeted anti-bias training related to the findings of, of the, of the audits. And then the last part of it is really about implementing all of this over time. So specific implementation teams tied to the roadmap to get the work done, repeating the process in two years to see, were these actions and these investments effective? Where did we still see problems? And having that really being a part of town management over time. We also recommend climate and cultural activities to celebrate the diversity that's already, already in the town. There's a, there's kind of a hard side of these recommendations, and there's a, there's a soft side. We were all really encouraged by a community coffee that we helped put on at the, at the library last week with all 17 members of the Concord Police Force and about 50 community members. It was, it was quite a great event, and people were mainly just introducing themselves and, and talking and, and building community. So in a nutshell, that's the high-level content of what we've shared. I don't know if I missed anything that my fellow Commission members would like to share, and then I think we'd love to discuss it. We have all of the Commission members introduce themselves, so do you mind telling everyone who you are?
Kristin, I'm.
Thank you, Kristin.
Yeah, come on up and, Jimmy, and.
I've been doing this work for over 50 years. And my, my wife and I, we, we did exercises called Deep Listening Circles, and they were really powerful. We did Minuteman vocational school. Took all the, all the kids that were bused in were in the inner circle, and they got to speak. And it's like, you know, you listen and you, and then you switch. But what we did was we let these kids talk about their lives, and it really caused a good integration, polarization through the different disparate groups of kids. And I want to do that in the Concord schools, Deep Listening Circles, and also bystander training. I've been, I learned, went through the whole course of bystander training, and I have a, a woman that I work with in New Hampshire, and we do bystander training in the communities. So those are, those are efforts that I personally would like to add on to, to the Commission moving forward.
So questions from the board?
I have a comment. I appreciate how concise the report and the recommendations are. And as I say about, I know it takes a lot longer to write something that's short than it does to write something that's long, and it's much more charitable to the reader. I think the recommendations are sensible, and they're realistic. And I especially appreciate your willingness to include the residential exemption as part of the diversity scheme, and that you understand how much, how big a difference it makes to have existing housing remain relatively affordable, and that's part of the project. But I think it's also important to recognize that the, the economics really are only one, I think, small part of the issue, because I don't know whether we can really ever make this community at low cost enough to make it truly diverse. And if you look at other communities that are substantially more diverse than Concord, you see that the economics, I mean, if you look at Acton or Lexington, it's not the economics that make them more diverse, because they are also high cost, but they are also much more diverse than we are. So there are other things that need to be considered.
I think that's right, and the Commission's talked a lot about that. It's not just the economics.
I mean, I think that tends to be an excuse.
Yeah. The economics are certainly a factor. Thank you.
Okay. I also just wanted to make a comment, which was that I strongly encourage everyone to take the survey, and that it's not just simply to help the DEI Commission with their data gathering, but the act of taking the survey itself confronts you with these questions. And I think about really how welcoming a community that Concord is, about how you as an individual participate or not in that process. As you answer these questions, you realize, oh, well, these are, are relevant questions for me on a day-to-day basis here. And, and I think that it's important as a result to get as many people to participate as possible. Mary?
Great, thank you. Thanks for all you've done. I've got a question about the, specifically the incident reporting system that you're talking about. So this, I assume, would be done by the police department? Is that, where would that, where would that be?
For actual, you know, Rose, you, I think you understand this better than I do. There's, some of these are incidents that are, don't need to be criminal matter yet. They're, they're, you know, I was, I was discriminated against in a, in a, in a store in Concord.
Okay.
And that was not right, and I want an apology. So don't necessarily need a police investigation for that. Others, with our Human Rights Commission, I think that's when it really becomes a matter of a civil rights law violation, and that's, that's separate from this one. This is, this is something we're seeing in a lot of towns. It's sort of DEI and diversity-related incident reporting.
So if I felt that I had been discriminated against in a store, who, who would I call if the town had this incident? I'm getting, I'm trying to get the specifics of how this works. Who, who, who are you going to call?
There's a hotline. There's sort of, there are three, three, I think, three ways to get the report in. One is a hotline, another is a website with a form that you, you fill out, or there's a paper form that you can fill out. And then there'd be an assigned team in, in City Hall who would, who would investigate it. And then communicate it back out, and importantly, compile the statistics. They said a really important piece of this system was to see, are these numbers getting better or worse as the years go by? And I don't think we're collecting data in a consistent way in this town yet.
Please, yeah, Andrew. So the, the team can either investigate it or channel it to another instance, depending on the nature of the incident. That's usually how it works. If it's an administrative, you know, investigation, or if it has to be channeled to either the police or the school that has its own system, and that, but the idea behind this is not only to have the actual hotline or the website, but an actual team that can deal with the incidents, investigate them, you know, collect the data and/or channel it to other instances. That's how it usually works.
So do they have any, so they would take the information in, right? But would they actually, what authority do they have to do anything? That's what I'm a little bit concerned about.
I think, so they, the first goal here is to get an easy intake to increase trust, to know that the town is listening. The, the second piece is triaging it. You know, I, I think, you know, which one of these actually do need some legal counsel review, which are things that can be done in restorative justice? That's just where injured parties sit down and talk to each other. And then the third part is, is analyzing it over time, so that we've got just a good, clear picture of what's happening. And I think the answer to some of your questions might be, once we start getting the data, where are these things happening, and where do we want to invest to, to, to be more proactive?
The other piece that does, if there's a tension building up, it usually engages and informs with that, with that buildup before it gets out of control.
Yes, Linda.
So first up, I really appreciate all the work that's gone into this, and particularly the way that you've laid out, doing the assessment, doing the roadmap, et cetera, going through these steps. But apropos what we're talking about right now, I assume that you also spoke with the Human Rights Council on this very topic, and I'm wondering, you know, Belmont, Mayor Maine, they do have a Human Rights Council, because I've actually attended events there, but they may or may not be playing the role that our Human Rights Council plays. So I'm just wondering how you see that at this point.
Do you want to take that one? You know.
So in Belmont's case, obviously, the, the Human Rights Council there already has pre-allocated budget and relationship, both with the schools and with the town. And so it would, you know, we would not only need to work with an entity within our town that has either a relationship or could be, both have the human capital. So it's the financial capital and resources, in addition to the human capital and resources required to be able to aggregate this information, execute on it, you know, make sound decisions. And in addition, the other piece that, for example, Belmont does, and the Human Rights Council in Belmont is an example of an existing entity that they activated in this manner. That doesn't necessarily mean that we have to model it through the same lens. I think the Human Rights Council is a wonderful community partner, but I think it would be a real conversation as to where, you know, who would be the right entity for us? Is it public health? Is it another matter? You know, another arm within our existing organizational structure that holds the opportunity to aggregate? Because it is in many ways a matter of public health, many of these instances and issues. And so the other thing I just want to highlight, based on the conversation that was mentioned, that the question that came up earlier, is just because you file an incident report or an incident through these forms, it doesn't preclude an individual to file it with their local, other local state or federal agencies. So they could have a, a incident that they report to MCAD in addition to their town. And actually, in the form, it actually asks you, have you filed any additional complaints regarding this incident? And if so, when and where? So you can actually track, this could be in addition to other tracking. So whether if they have other systemic involvement, there's just multiple ways to track. And then we would issue an annual report with these findings as to what is the nature of what's happening in our community? What is the practice? What is the policy? How are we addressing it? How are we being transparent and timely in our response? And how are we trying to do better together?
Yes, Derek.
Thank you for everything you're doing, and that was a wonderful event with great turnout at the library last week. And I have two questions. So one of the goals here that I think the Select Board even wrote by.
Well, I think they referenced the Select Board's goals.
Right, that you, exactly. And I'm very curious if you have any suggestions about this one, conduct DEI training sessions for the Select Board, because there's a number, number of instances recently where I'm realizing how much training I need. For example, like Matt said, doing that survey really opened my eyes. I had to go back and rethink a number of the questions. I was in a Concord business about a month ago, where a customer came in and was making inappropriate remarks, and the business owner didn't know what to do, I didn't know what to do. You know, training would be really good. And if you have any suggestions on that. And my other question is whether you're working at all with the town staff and the town manager and the SMT, because they have a parallel effort going on, and they have a consulting report, and there's a big overlap. Values in the community and traditions in the community may need to be looked at, which is both on a committee level and a citizen level and a staff level. So those are my two questions.
I mean, I think to the extent the Select Board would like the training, that's fantastic. This is a complicated topic. Lots of towns are wrestling with it. Lots of people don't feel like they know everything that they should know. And, and, and the good news is in Massachusetts, there's a wealth of resources and people that can provide training like that. So I think the, sure.
And I would add about the timing for that. That's probably going to come in the, that's going to be included in the roadmap.
Okay.
Yes, training for staffs and for stakeholders. It can certainly happen before, but it's usually, you know, one of the steps.
And then I, I think on the second piece, the last thing we want to do is redundant recommendations. So we try to understand the, the reports, and, and, you know, Carrie has shared those with us, so we're aware of what's happened with the town workforce so far. And so anything that we're saying here would really meant to fill in gaps rather than.
Right.
you know, replace or overlap.
Okay. So when I look at the recommendations, I kind of step through them and say, okay, the survey, it's going on. And I think about, okay, how can the Select Board help? Right? And I think we can help by further publicizing the survey, try to encourage more responses. I think I heard that the goal is 1,000, right? So we said 230, that sounds okay, but really trying to get a more representative sample. Then the the second with the small stakeholder interviews and small group conversations, that's something that the commission is working on. So I don't think we need to do anything there as a Select Board. Then the plan, that's going to be a plan that you'll come back to us with. So I think one of the things we need to do is schedule that checkpoint. When when do you want to meet with us for that?
Some of that's going to depend on when we close the survey and then have a time to analyze it. But I think we we'd like to do that in the second quarter.
Yeah, so right after town meeting, maybe?
I think we ought to shoot to have it done before town meeting.
Before town meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. We got it. We got to pump up the survey. That's that's what we're going to need for that.
Can I make one comment about the survey?
Yeah.
Real quick. It was one of the hardest surveys I've ever filled out. You really had to think through it. And I'm thinking that people might give up that's because it was really hard.
Do you get statistics for how many people start and then don't complete the survey? And you get partial responses as well?
We had the 237 people completed it. I'll get this.
Yeah, I'd be interested in how many attempted it.
Yeah.
Because it is a thorough survey.
It is.
It's not a short thing.
You have to really think through, you know, what's been happening in the last 10 years, 20 years? Have you seen these incidents? You really have to think through. And then I started thinking, well, if if I'm a white person, I'm I'm thinking about it this way, but if I was a person of color, I might have remembered it this other way. And it just it was an incredible education experience just to take the survey. So I highly recommend that everyone attempt it and try to complete it.
So now, as I move to the fourth item.
Well, yeah, Matt, just because I don't think we got an answer to your question as to whether how many people? How many people checked in and quit before?
Andrea's looking it up for her. She's good at seeking it out.
And and one important thing about surveys is whether or not you have questions that have, quote, mandatory answers, which sometimes also leads people to quit in the middle because they can't deal with a particular. I mean, this is survey science. It's not the real issue here, but.
Yeah, I thought that the survey, by the way, was well-designed survey. But it was not one that you could just do in 10 seconds, like three questions.
It's not intended.
No, it's a thorough.
Right.
Anything that has has 10 items and has you rank them, force rank them, that's a that's a more advanced survey.
And is the survey offered to students in our public and private schools as well?
Yes.
Has there been a good response from them? Because I think in many ways, our schools, both public and private, are more diverse than the rest of the community.
Yeah, it's a good point. And actually, I think getting the school system to help get this out there and broadcast it would be would be a pretty important next step. Okay. All right. Anyone from school committee here?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Did you guys make sure the survey hit that?
We'll also want to coordinate with surveys that are already underway.
Okay.
We have some data coming in.
Linda, you had a.
And, you know, to the point of the design of the survey, and I'm sure you're already aware of this, it's if it isn't challenging for the normal person, it's also very challenging for people who don't go to the computer, number one, who may not even have their attention turned to surveys, even if they hear about them. And often that is part of the population that we'd like to get to if we can.
Exactly.
So in fact, there may be a way to facilitate.
Correct.
Collection of responses.
Someone could sit with them, help.
Someone sit with that. Yeah, that's an interesting possibility.
Maybe the council on aging, for example.
Yes.
Ah, that'd be very interesting.
So just just comment, part of the reason that we stressed the need for staff and implementation is I'm I think we all really appreciate the engagement that we're getting. We all have full-time jobs.
Sure.
We're doing this nights and weekends. So and 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 Carrie and Donna have are working hard with many hats and roles, too. So so I think having some arms and legs to help us, you know, really, really do the research on an incident reporting system, you know, get out there and be able to sit with somebody to help them do the survey is prob we're probably pretty quickly approaching the point where if we're going to do anything seriously, we're going to need more arms and legs.
Yeah, okay. So now I get to the next item, which is work with the town to secure appropriate funding in support of the DEI roadmap. So of course, one of the tricks we have in town government is, okay, you come up with your roadmap in Q2 of calendar year 2023, and well, the fiscal year is ending, we've already just gone to town, we're going to town meeting, we've just signed off on the budget for the whole next year. Okay? And so that means that now we're talking about, based upon the roadmap, making decisions for the year after that. And and that's always the trick we have, I think, with the wheels turn slow. They grind fine, but they turn slow. And so, you know, that's why often we have these processes where, okay, we do the survey, then based upon the survey, we do the roadmap, then we make the case for hiring, and then we, you know, and it just takes what seems like forever. But actually, that's almost the way the fastest things can go. So I don't know if Carrie can make any comments on what's planned for spending in this coming fiscal year and just also your your sense of your roadmap work.
Yeah, so, you know, one thing that helps us is the ARPA funding that's available. And the ARPA funding, one of the the tenants of it is to to be used to support initiatives and communities that that have not historically been supported. We we have decided that we would be looking at doling out ARPA funds through the lens of of a fiscal year process. And later this evening, we're going to talk a little bit about fiscal year 24. But the nice thing is, we're not really tied to that. And so if we find that we're ready at some point mid mid fiscal year, we can tap into that funding. So for fiscal 24, based on the conversation, maybe a couple of weeks ago, Matt, you were involved in in that conversation. And Andrea, you had some dollars tied to some of the different activities. There's $75,000 that's planned for fiscal 24. It doesn't have to be 75. It it could be more than that. But that was based on my sense of how things might be moving along, what might be good for fiscal 24. But fiscal 24 is July 1, 2023 to June 30, 2024. I know you're working on calendar year.
Yeah.
Quarters, and most of what you have outlined here really falls within fiscal 23. So in fiscal 23, we only have $10,000 plugged into the budget. We have not tapped into that. It doesn't mean that we couldn't come up with something more. But that that's.
Well, I wonder if there's actually something that even that $10,000 could help with relative to the survey and putting the roadmap together.
Hiring consultant. I mean, we've been a consultant would be very useful right now.
Yeah.
You even have plans underway, so.
Yeah, and so we we started a process some point during the pandemic. I've I've sort of lost track, where we were working with a local consultant and and we really were doing some work inside of the organization. And then that stopped, and we're trying to restart that effort. The consultant we were working with is not interested in doing what we think is is the next step. He he's interested in continuing to work with us, but not really on on what we think is the next step. So we had approached a consultant, I don't know, probably nine months ago now, we received a proposal and we've been talking to her. We think she would be a really good fit. She's not local, but she's somebody who does this work nationwide. She does a lot of work with municipal government. And so we thought that she might be a good fit. I'm not sure if if you've seen the proposal or not. I know we've talked about that. We have not entered into a formal agreement, but we think she would be a good fit for what we need to do. And and we don't see it as an overlap with what the commission is doing because it's really focused internally on our own policies and procedures and practices.
I mean, to some degree, there is a parallel process, but the key is to keep it parallel, I think, you know, so that it's interlocked. Okay, so and then that then ties to the hiring, which is the next goal. And then the final one is the bias reporting system. And so I think that we'd just be interested in hearing, you know, what do we need to do to make that happen, you know? And I just just did some Googling around for the Belmont. I could only find the school-based bias reporting system. Seems like that's right there. But I don't know what the town side of that looks like.
I mean, I think in the short term, at one point, we had a but it seemed like overkill for this meeting, another column here, which was just accountabilities to get it done. So I think for that one, if somebody within the town staff could be on point to work with us, and their job is to help us develop this.
Now, you've been you've had Donna McIntosh as your connection, right? Your point of contact. So I think that would still be correct for this, wouldn't it?
Yeah, it's it's difficult because she she does wear many hats. She's very interested in this work, but she's not she's not always available. I think we have maybe another staff member who would also be interested, but has has a full-time position. And we understand we we need some additional staff. And this these efforts certainly could move faster if if we hired a staff person.
Yeah, yeah.
One of the things that we have, and it's not at all related to this issue, but one of the issues we have is we have brought on a lot of new staff members in the I've been with the town six and a half years. We've brought on a lot of people. And we're not always able to manage all of all of the work we don't have in the management structure, do not have the ability to effectively manage everybody. And I I am concerned about that because there are a number of examples of communities that have brought on particularly a DEI director and have been very, very frustrated, maybe not for for the same reasons, but but frustrated because they're not able to do the work that they want to do. And I want that to happen here.
So other questions from board members?
Hello?
So anybody who's on Zoom who's not recognized, please go unmute. So I think then we kind of have our action plan, though it it sounds like a couple of things that we're looking for. First of all, I think what your recommendation would be for our Select Board training. Secondly, we want to schedule a next get together, hopefully before town meeting to go through the three-year plan. And then also, we need to work as a board to try to publicize the survey and to get as many responses. I think that those are the three takeaways that I have for us as board members. Anything else that we should be looking to?
I would I would say somebody to work with on on a budget to support this roadmap, just to have in your head, who who would that budget liaison be? And then if any, if there's some flexibility to have a funded position to start in fiscal 24, sounds like you're aligned that you think that would be helpful from your end as well.
Yeah, I right, because I I think it will be, even if we are able to to dedicate additional part-time resources.
Yeah.
It's still going to be frustrating because you really would need all of those people with you all of the time to know what you're doing. And that's I I don't think that that would advance the work at the pace that you and the community is interested in seeing this move forward. So I would say for for budget, I would continue to work with Donna.
Okay.
And she and I meet regularly, and I think she's the best person for that right now.
Okay.
About the training, I'm wondering if it should just be the Select Board or maybe all the committee chairs or I don't know. And, you know.
Yeah, I wonder if there is a like a I don't know if self-paste is the right way or something to get people through it. Because, I mean.
Right.
We have training programs, and of course, it would be nice to expand the standard training that we do, you know, on on.
Well, like a Saturday workshop.
Conflict of interest, you know.
Yeah.
But this is more, I think we need to build a foundation rather than just.
Right, right. I think if you want to put us through, you know, a six-week or 12-week course or something, that's probably not doable. There's just too much other business going on, and you won't get the participation. But if you had, I am thinking of the conflict of interest thing we do on Saturday morning once a year, or the town meeting preview meeting on a Saturday morning. It doesn't have to be Saturday morning, I'm just making that up. But, you know, a half-day workshop that any, I don't know, it would be open to many people, and you could accomplish a lot in that one day.
Well, I think, though, that that may be a reason that we may need to distinguish the boards' training from.
Right.
The rest, because I think we need more than just a two hours show up and, yeah.
Well, it has to be participatory. It can't just be lecture, you know?
It can't be self-paced.
That's right. And I think multiple sessions are helpful.
Right. Without it being too over.
In between, yeah.
Yeah, it's it's tough.
But we need to make.
We need your recommendations on how to strike that balance.
So I think an important piece is that the training is ongoing in some manner and that it's not just a one and done.
Right.
That it is sort of viewed as a systemic priority, and the access to the training should be broad in addition to Select Board.
Yeah.
Townwide employees, staff, people who are making a commitment in a variety of ways to the town should have access. So in the spirit of DEI and inclusion and equity, we would want the training to be accessed across, you know, beyond this building. So while I understand the value of like the foundational training, we want there to be some working concepts, understanding of of languaging and all of the terms that will continue to evolve and the value of the work that we're trying to bring forth. I just think that as we think about this in terms of the system that we're all kind of operating within and what we want to see evolve, that it is viewed as a systemic priority and that there will be ongoing both allocation of time and and resources as we go. And because that's what we're seeing also with the, for example, the survey. You know, we had people initially engaged. They did one share out through their channels, but we really need there to be ongoing shares to at least get more engagement. So for the example of, you know, was distributed through the schools, it was it was shared out through a weekly superintendent's message. We'd love that similarly through various town channels to be continued to be shared until we can get the engagement we need. And so we're hoping to build more and more opportunities for training that the town community can engage in in a variety of ways, because there there is a lot to cover and learn together.
Okay. All right. I think that that's it for this topic. I'm trying to think if there's any other items we need to cover. Okay, well, thanks so much for coming in. Look forward to us meeting again in April. And thanks for the gift.
Love it.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't know if you were opening the public comment on this since there were.
Well, since this is a major topic, yeah, we could, I think, and we also are a few minutes, we have a few minutes for public comment. We could make, we could take a few public comments, sure.
No pressure.
So there is a microphone up here. You want to step forward? Or if you're on Zoom, you can use the raise hand function and then hopefully the unmute button and identify yourself. Okay, I see one person coming up.
Hi, this is Liz Cobb, 31 Pondview Lane here in Concord. I came in a little bit late, but I did hear the beginning of a discussion about a reporting structure, but I didn't hear the end of that discussion. I'm a part of the DEI committee at the League of Women Voters, where we put together a series where some of you were able to attend. And we had some. And we had some wonderful discussion from a colleague in Belmont. And she has organized a public reporting process that we would love to see here in Concord. And I wondered if you had any comments on that particular part of.
Yeah, we discussed it and that's one of the action items is to, I think, get a proposal on how we could implement that, you know, here. So.
Thanks to you for finding, and she's wonderful. And absolutely the spark of the idea of a reporting system.
What's the next step for that?
No, that wasn't what was. We're coming back to the select board with it. Well, we're going to find a, we're going to find a person to help design it and we'll go to the next stage of designing it.
And the other next step is to, uh, survey.
Yeah. Okay. So any other public comment? All right, then.
Sorry. Can I talk from here? You want me to?
No, yeah, we need a microphone. Those on Zoom can't hear you otherwise.
Hi, Joe Palumbo, 90 Black Horse Place. I, I've had the great opportunity to come to many of the DI Commission meetings. They were kind enough to let me hover. And we, as you all said, we appreciate so much the work they've been doing. And I just think that knowing what we know that has gone on in other towns and people that have spoken, whether is that your meetings or the League of Women Voters meetings or just people you've met, there's a lot of incidents that are happening that are not, there's, because there's no system right now for them to re-report it. And you said even when you took the survey, you kind of like it brought up thoughts of you. We all have seen or heard or know. And it made me nervous when I heard you Matt explain very clearly the length of time it takes with the budgeting process and the ability to get a warrant. And there is pressure on us to get this fixed sooner rather than later because something's going to happen if we don't. So I just wanted to bring that sense of urgency to the table. Hopefully, it's not what happened in Belmont. And we don't want that to happen in the town that we love. So we've got to, this can't be something that just takes the usual amount of time. This should be something that feels like there's a fire underneath us because there is. I see people who visit town because I, one of my positions, I take a lot of visitors through the town and people report to me what happened when they come to town or how they felt. We've got people who work in town. You know, my people can't live in the town and work here, but workers who come in every day that face things in retail. They face things when they're doing landscaping in someone's yard. I mean, the, there's a, a person who works in town that was, things were said to her at the train station. I mean, this goes on. You had the, the man, the gentleman who reported here recently about his interaction with the public safety in Concord. So we got to have a system. So my only worry is that we don't take a year and a half to figure out a system. We figure it, we put it priority, make it happen fast so that we protect ourselves from any of these incidents turning in a way that we don't want them to happen. And, and as a member of the LGBTQ+ community in Concord, that's important for us as well. I think they said, but it's not just about race. It's about race, it's about diversity, it's about gender diversity, it's about age, it's about disability. Diversity is a huge ball that we have to work on. If we want to make Concord a town that feels like a Concord for everyone.
Thank you. Okay, so I think we'll move to our next agenda item, thanks to the DEI Commission. And that next item is in fact to approve the Housing Production Plan, which is referenced in the DEI Commission's work. So we'll just give a second for folks to move if they'd like. Liz Russ can come up.
Maybe we should start meeting in the big room. This is how it works.
Yeah, I think this is kind of unusual.
Yeah, but last time this happened to.
Okay, Mr. Bergman, Liz Russ. So we were meeting here just recently and we walked through the latest revisions of the plan. So I guess the first thing I would request is if you could just tell us, what has changed since the last time we looked at this? Can you just highlight what, what has been revised to the plan since then?
Sure. Yeah, hi, I'm Liz Russ and I live at 201 Commonwealth Avenue. And I've been happy to work on the Housing Production Plan with the team, with the consultants in Marsha Bresmussen and Keith Bergman here in the HPP Steering Committee. So it was the 5th of December, two weeks ago, is that right? The 5th, yep. Yep, and I think that was the last day of public comments. So we received a number of comments that were made in the plan from then to here. We had the input from the DEI Commission so that influenced some of the strategies that were here. In particular, there was a strengthening of family housing. Family housing being a way to increase diversity in town. So I think that there was one strategy that particularly calls that out. There were some other, you know, more wordsmithing comments, but I, I think maybe the DEI was the most substantive piece.
I think you provided us with the number also for the, the average income that was used as a standard for subsidies, which was $140,000 for the family of four, from which you used 80% and so on. I, I don't think we had that number before.
That was, that was part of, that's been in the report since the beginning. We may have called it out in the summary perhaps, but that's been in the report before, yes.
Yeah.
Question, I, I have a philosophical question, I think. First of all, I think, thank you for this. This is just a fabulous report. It's important to have this conversation in town. The report is beautiful, it's well-organized, a lot of really good data. And I think this is important to the town. So thank you. I'm wondering, can you tell me, what do you think realistically is going to change because of this report going forward? What, if anything, is going to change now that we have all this information?
Keith Bergman, 56 White Avenue, Chair of the Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust and a member of the Housing Production Plan Steering Committee. And Liz graciously moved the, let me give a first crack at that answer to the question. And I think it is, the answer comes from the answers that we heard at this table at our last meeting with you. And that is that, that the select board is, is focusing on implementation. It's focusing on how do you engage? How does this board engage with, with the other housing entities? So that we're all, we all have a better idea of what we're doing and that we are committed to working cooperatively together. And I dare say, whether it's, you know, agreeing on who's going to be the lead on a particular project. And with that leadership then comes the, the obligation to, to keep other people, other entities in the loop. And I, and I'm, I, I see that as the great salvation that we can take from this, from some of the disappointment that, that the, the community, the affordable housing community has experienced earlier this year by focusing. And I've encouraged people to just, you know, focus on what we can do together, focus on what we have a common vision to achieve and then stay in constant communication about it. Because development, a development project, for example, takes years, as we know. And the fact that somewhere along the very, you know, and just doing Monday morning quarterbacking from a decade-long project that ultimately didn't happen, there's lots of missed opportunities along the way where if, if everyone had done a better job of staying in touch and, and if, if you could identify at an earlier stage, maybe things weren't, you know, going to turn out well. We could have decided that might have saved a few years of, of disappointment. But the main thing that comes from, from this plan is the commitment to work together. And I appreciated the opportunity to speak with several members of the, of the board about that. And I, I guess where I'm coming from for 40 years, as a, I'm a retired town manager type now, but for 40 years, I, so my job is to make sure that the Board of Selectmen, as we called it back then, the Select Board gets, is, is the focal point for the policy leadership. And that includes affordable housing, thanks. Each one of us is vested. My, my committee, the trust, has certain responsibilities and authority. Other housing groups have their responsibilities and authority. But we really have to all be working together and with the same vision for what we want to accomplish. And this Housing Production Plan gives us the best opportunity that we'll have to do that. And we, we need to make the commitment to work, to continue to work together and find a way that works for us to have regular reporting. If not, nothing, uh, nothing would work better than to have periodic, low-stress updates with the select board, just on how are things going? So that it's not, we only come, that, you know, we only come here when it's a do-or-die, up or down, yes or no. And that's the wrong, that's just not good public policy. You need to be a lot more involved in it. So that's, that's what I hope we can take from this.
I would just add that I think the Housing Production Plan is a roadmap for housing for the next five years in Concord. So as any roadmap, you know, maybe you would do some of these. There are 24 strategies here that range from production to education to zoning, to collaboration opportunities. Maybe you would do those without a roadmap, but often a roadmap and a framework makes sure that you, you know, equally, you know, work towards the identified initiatives that are laid out here, so.
One of the things I thought, which is, which is a slight change in direction, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it's more reaching out to developers to see what makes sense for them as well, so that we can actually make something happen as opposed to doing it in a vacuum without one, understanding if it's going to meet someone who's actually going to, has that always been the case? It didn't feel that.
I think the different opportunities present themselves. And I know the time since I've been working with Concord and affordable housing, developers come forward and they're talking to the planning board for their development. And there's an opportunity to increase affordability at the development or something, you know, to make some kind of arrangement. And, and so that that's gone on in the past also.
But again, that's them coming to us, right? And I'm wondering if we're being more proactive now as far as going out and talking to developers and saying, what would make sense for you?
I think that all the different strategies work, right? Looking at the opportunities, maybe there's a land opportunity. The CHDC is certainly in, you know, has land to talk to developers with, right?
Right.
But we have one situation now where we are trying to make some progress with the land on Commonwealth Avenue, where I've had some conversations with the housing, a member of the Housing Trust about going out and being proactive and trying to find a developer who would be appropriate for developing that site, which is now available. And rather than waiting for somebody to come along with an idea. And also with, with regard to perhaps if, if funding is an issue, is that we explore the authority of the house, of the Affordable Housing Trust to borrow money to get projects started even, which would then be paid back by the project as it went forward. But I think we have an opportunity there because we have a site and we have a need. And I think it would help to be proactive in moving that forward as, as, as a opportunity that is there right now.
Can I just clarify what site you're talking about?
The, the Christopher Hyde site.
Oh, I see, yeah, got you, got you.
Yes.
So I also was approached by someone who was not a developer, but wanted to help and had some ideas and was asking, when is the next time that we're all talking about housing? Because I think we did agree that it's going to be in February or March that we're, and I couldn't remember.
I thought it was March, you were going to come back.
All right, good. Because I do agree with Keith. I think it would be a lot lower stress. We could have just the regular updates and brainstorm together. And also to let us think more out of the box. I really appreciate the Housing Production Plan, but I'm wondering, I know it's very late, but perhaps we could just add one more strategy, such as what the League of Women Voters is saying here, that we have like a, I don't know, creative thinking, they're calling it. And they have some ideas in, in the letter they sent in, some of which we talked about. But if it's too late, okay.
The ink is dry.
It's dry, okay. But I think we, something we should keep in mind because we need to do something new. We, we see we need more than the usual strategies to really work together and get through this, so.
And we did put the League of Women Voters, their creative ideas, like on the, on the last page.
Yeah.
And many of these, they had 12 different ideas.
Right.
They're really included in these other strategies and they just said in a different way.
All right.
But we felt that they were really covered in this, so we included this memo here.
Okay, great.
And again, this is a roadmap. New things will come up, you know, new projects will emerge that aren't covered here, which is fine. It's a non-binding plan, but it just sets the framework. And it does offer, it has a strategy for increased collaboration between all the boards, including, including you all.
Thank you.
Okay. So are we ready for a motion?
Can we update you on just one, just, just.
Sure.
For, for the record, that the.
Oh, thank you.
The Housing Production Plan is approved locally under the state regulations by the Planning Board and the Select Board. Planning Board voted unanimously last week to approve the form of the plan, which you have in, in front of you dated December 9th. As far as I'm aware, all of the housing committees, I know the Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust, the Housing Production Plan Steering Committee, the Concord Housing Authority, the Concord Housing Foundation and the CHDC have all voted to support this and recommend this document as well.
Let's see if we can add the select board to that long list.
All right, move to approve the final version of the Housing Production Plan as included in the board's packet tonight.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
You got another name?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll be in touch.
We'll be working together on this.
Continue to, to send people our way and we will talk to them.
Let us know when the movie is coming out. The movie, you know, this is the, this is the book, right?
That's the book. Hopefully it will be a good one.
It'll be the success story.
Five stars, okay.
Hopefully it'll be chronicle, you know, Main Street.
Yes. Okay. Thank you so much. And so now we're moving to our next item, which is to amend the Public Ceremonies and Celebrations Committee charge. So Mr. Dane.
Requiring.
Well, no, I've, I've looked through it. I actually had two different questions. So the first one was about the number, total number of members. So typically, we have an odd number of members because when you think about quorum and, you know, about votes, that odd numbers tend to work better than even numbers.
Yeah, right.
I don't, I, that rarely becomes an issue. And you know, the result is if you get a tie vote, it means that the vote doesn't pass. So there is a built-in mechanism.
Certainly.
It, it represents, it was part of a more general compromise in order to, in order to revitalize the committee and to get some new people appointed to it. And then there were some people who had not been properly appointed in the, in the past. And they were, felt very strongly that, that one of those people should be a member of the committee. And since I had. And since I had already, and they're on the agenda for tonight to be appointed, I, I thought that a sensible compromise was to increase the number of members of the committee to include the two new members plus appointing the one person that they wished to stay on the committee. So it was more of a practical, rather than institutional, result.
So that would lead to the eight members?
That's right. That leads to the eight members. So it was all, it all resulted in a, you know, I met with, I met with the Celebrations Committee about a couple of months ago, and we, we discussed this issue and the composition of the committee, and they, and so I suggested to them that if there were some changes that were, they, they desired, to submit a draft to me, which eventually came through. And I edited that to make it conform to what I thought was, you know, some of the practical administrative issues. And what we have now is a result that accomplishes two things. It keeps, it keeps the committee intact, but with some two very fine new members. And it also provides for up to five associate members, which were no longer permitted under the old charge. And it makes a compromise on the veterans' composition of it, because the old charge required that the, all of the members be veterans of military service. And so we, we came up with having the charge have requirement that two of the eight members be veterans of military service. And the rest of it was just to add in some additional functions that they thought they would like to have. And so it was, it, it was, it was a way just of recasting it to make the situation more, more, more workable.
So my other question is about those associate members, because it strikes me, if I read this, if I'm reading this correctly, that they are only temporarily appointed for an event.
Well, that was what happened in the old charge. The old charge said there would be five associate members who are appointed for the specific purpose of the helping with the 2000, the year 2000 celebration, and that their terms would expire after March whatever, May something of 2000, so that there was no provision for associate members after the expiration of the year 2000. So, so in order to provide in a more general way for the opportunity to have associate members, I provided that there could be associate members that would either be appointed for a particular event or a particular task, or for a longer period of time if there was something for them to do, and that their term would either expire at the end of the task, or, at the end of the task, or at some future date that would be determined when they were appointed.
I guess I'm curious about the overhead of a formal appointment, especially given that there are associate members that don't have voting privileges. So it just seems like anyone could volunteer to help out with an event, help the Public Ceremonies and Celebrations Committee. I, I just don't understand the necessity or even the benefit of having them be associate members.
Well, I think part of it, just, that may be a kind of a legacy, as it was something that's always been in the charge for the committee. And I, I didn't want to change, I didn't want to change anything that didn't seem to need change, except in a way that would make it more workable.
Well, is there a particular event or reason to have these associate members at this time?
I think they would probably want to have those for the 2025 celebration.
That's what I was thinking. So what I don't understand is, what's the difference between those associate members and the members of the 2025 committees?
It's my hope that, it's my hope that if they, they, it's my hope that they would, in effect, work with the 2025 committee in terms of managing the events like the parade and the ceremonies at the North Bridge and so on, that they have typically done, rather than having the 2025 committee have to organize and sponsor, you know, organize those events. So I, that, which is why I, I was interested in getting them kind of reconstituted, because I thought that they would, I would rather have, work with them in concert, as having them take a part of the function, which was similar to what they have done on a year-to-year basis, and handle that aspect of the 2025 event. We have on our committee John Arena, who is in charge of events, and he is a former Chair of the Public Ceremonies Committee. But I, I would prefer not to have to recreate the whole structure within our committee and then leave the Public Ceremonies Committee with nothing to do.
But was that how it worked in 1975?
I, I believe it did.
That the Public Ceremonies and Celebrations Committee continued to run the events, their usual events that year? And, and then the 1975 committee just did additional things, like the ball and the?
Yeah, I think so. I think that was.
Really?
But I think, I don't think that's a bad model, in any event, whether it was. I don't.
Okay. Because I, I was assuming that the 2025 committee would be responsible for the whole, the whole deal.
Yeah.
All the events around the 2025, because it's going to be of a piece, you know? It's going to have its themes and the, whereas the, the Public Ceremonies and Celebrations Committee tends to operate the same kind of event, you know, on a.
But they have, they have the resources and the contacts and the scripts for many of the events. And that's where we're going to end up if, if, if we can't, if we can't work out a, an effective cooperative arrangement, which is why I wanted to have some more input into their, into their, into their membership and to their operations.
Are, are they going to be coming in to, to speak with us soon? I'm wondering if we should hold on this?
Well.
If they're coming in soon, anyway.
They are? Hmm? They are coming in?
I don't know. I'm asking.
What for?
Well, what, what?
Talk about the progress of?
Here's, here's what I can tell you about this. I had the draft that was presented by the committee. I revised it and sent it to the, all the members of the committee about a week ago, and I've had no, no comments.
Which committee? Public Ceremonies? Oh, okay. I'm talking about the 2025 committee. Are they going to be coming in to the Select Board soon to talk about, you know, their events, their article at town meeting?
We're, we're working now on our year-end report to give to the Select Board.
Uh-huh.
So Henry, you know, thank you and the committee for doing work on this. You know, having watched what's happened to the Public Ceremonies Committee over a number of years now, I think it's needed to revitalize this committee. And often when events, we're walking up to events, there was not enough manpower and/or outreach to get the manpower for what they needed to get done. They always manage to pull off the events, but sometimes in an abbreviated form. So I can hear my colleagues are struggling with the, the associate member piece of this, but I do think they do need to have some other people in the wings, much like some of our other committees have, if nothing else, for them to have the, the training, if you will, over a period of time, so that they can step up and move into those positions. I, I think it's important whether or not the number is five, or whether or not, I don't know, but.
Okay. Well, I think one of the things I'm struggling with is how the Public Ceremonies and Celebrations Committee will interact with the 250th. And then we heard from Mike Lawson, and so we've gotten now three groups, and how is this all going to get collaborated and everything?
Our, the 250 Committee has, I think it's been quite a comprehensive.
Right.
Umbrella over the whole thing with 10 subcommittees.
Right.
And we will work this, we will work out this, this relationship. And either we will make it work, or we will come up with something else. And that's, I think I would, I think that's something that, I think that's something we can handle.
I, I agree with, with Terry's concern about hearing all these different committees and how are they going to integrate together. But for what is on the agenda tonight, this particular charge, I trust that the work that you've done over the years, you understand the work. And if you've distributed this to the committee and you've got no negative input, is that accurate?
That is, yes, that is correct.
Then I am okay with the way it's written. I don't have an objection.
I don't either. There's a couple, there's one, the Select Board, you updated the language, you might have missed one or two spots there for this.
Did I?
Yeah, the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah. You, you can catch that.
See other events.
And then the other question I had, just in terms of the detail, was you talk about going to the Assistant Town Manager, the, I guess the request for funding and so forth. And I just wanted to make sure that that was accurate in terms of how Carrie sees it. That's item I, I believe.
Committee shall review all warrants for payment before referral to the Assistant Town Manager.
Oh, that's, that, that is, that also is a legacy from the present charge.
Yes.
And if that needs to be changed, to make it whatever the system would be at this point, it seemed like it was, it just seemed like it was innocuous in that it said they're not going to spend any money without going through the proper administrative channels.
Yeah. So I would just suggest removing Assistant.
Okay.
Okay. Then she could delegate.
Yes. So, okay. So we don't, so we will correct the Select Board omissions, and we will delete Assistant. And we, can we vote to approve it, with subject to those changes?
Okay.
So I, I had one other question, which was, Henry, one possibility is, because getting to your, getting more resources on board. If, if you made it nine regular voting members, the quorum requirement would be the same, so would the number of yea votes, you know, to pass a motion.
I wouldn't, I would not object to having, I would not object to that, subject, because then we could make, we could make probably some more appointments to the committee.
I just think that, you know, and then, you know, the associate members, we could take our time and only, you know, bring them on if we feel like we need to. And in the meantime, we've got a fully, you know, full force.
I have no.
I think that that's nice, because to me, it just means that we're stepping up as we're getting towards the 2025, we're getting extra resources on the Public Ceremonies and Celebrations Committee. And I think then, really, most of the rest of your changes are, first of all, to make a provision for associate members, should we decide we need them, right? Because it doesn't require us.
To have them.
To have them.
Right.
And then modernizing some of the other references, you know, because a lot of it were a little archaic. So I think that now I'm, I'm fine if we can do that. So.
Okay.
So basically, the motion would now be to approve this with the change of nine, rather than eight regular voting members, and to indicate in clause I, the Town Manager, rather than Assistant Town Manager, to review all warrants for payment.
Right. And to change Selectmen to Select Board.
Yes.
And I think that's it. So move to approve the amended Public Ceremonies and Celebrations Committee charge with those three amendments, as included in the packet.
Second?
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Thank you.
You ask for eight, you get an aye. All right. So now we're coming to the 2024 budget overview, and also the fiscal year, our priorities and the fiscal year capital improvement plan. I'm sure this will just take two or three minutes. One minute for each item.
Yeah. And we're back on track with the agenda. So Gail Dowd, our CFO, and Bob LaLecher, our finance guru, if you want to join me up here. Please, please, please join me up here.
We heard that, even without the microphone.
So this obviously isn't the first time we've come to talk to you about the budget and the capital. And I know most of you have been in attendance at the Finance Committee meetings, where we've talked about, about the budget. So we did want to just give you an update on where we are with the 24 budget, but I think the main focus tonight, really, we wanted to talk for the first time about priorities for ARPA spending for fiscal 24. But just to, to start with, with the budget, there is a presentation that is in the packet. We did put the budget together, trying to address four different strategic challenges or initiatives that we talked to you about before, creating a great place to work, addressing governance issues, focusing on infrastructure, and welcoming community, or creating a sense of belonging within the, within the community. And I won't go into those in any great detail, because we have talked about those before. And again, I know most of you were at the Finance Committee meeting. What I, I do want to commit to you is that we are putting a budget together that meets the Finance Committee guideline for fiscal 24, which represents a healthy 5.0% increase. It's almost $1.6 million in additional funding for fiscal 24, and a total budget of $33,322,385.
Now, is that inclusive or exclusive of the ARPA money?
It is exclusive of the ARPA funding. In meeting the guideline, we will be somewhat more dependent on some of our additional funding resources, particularly ARPA, the Recreation Fund and the Cemetery Fund, and I'll talk about that a little bit in further detail. But if you are on page three of the presentation, these are sort of the highlights of what's included in the budget. As you know, we are undergoing a classification and compensation study. It is very comprehensive. We started this at the very end of last fiscal year, and we do have funding available in the current year and, and in fiscal 24 to address any changes that need to be implemented as a result of, of the class and comp study. If you followed any of the activity of the Personnel Board, they have received regular updates on the status. And at the last meeting, you heard a little bit about the work that they are, or their involvement in, in this process. So that is, that is ongoing. I think unfortunately, we're a little bit behind where I had hoped we would be. I, I can't tell you exactly what the financial impact of, of that study is. And in fact, tomorrow, we have a meeting with HR Director, some representatives of the personnel tasks, the Personnel Board, the moderator, to talk about how we might structure the standard warrant articles to give us the flexibility we need to be able to implement the class and comp study. So, so that is something we're still working on.
Yeah. I mean, my fear is that it will lead to a very significant change in compensation. I mean, as a result of.
Yeah. I, I think we're hoping that overall, it's not a significant change, but there may be some areas that there are significant changes. So we just unfortunately are not, we're not there yet. And, and we're trying to figure out how we can be able to implement the results of, of this work for, at the 2023 annual town meeting.
Wow. So wait, when we go to the town meeting, we have ranges, right? Wow, so when we go to the town meeting, we have ranges, right?
Yes.
And we don't know what those ranges should be based on the comp study. Okay, I understand the challenge.
Yeah, we're, we're well underway. And we're actually hoping to be able to implement something that is more flexible than what we have. Maybe have fewer grades and fewer classifications. And so we're, we're looking to do.
But do you anticipate a problem of having something to put on the warrant?
So.
By the time it closes?
We're going to talk about that tomorrow, at the meeting tomorrow.
And also, it won't prevent us from implementing the results, however you word these articles, it won't.
That's what we want to make sure. We want, we want to make sure that we are in a position to implement for fiscal 24.
I mean, maybe we need to be creative and think about a special town meeting, within town meeting.
That is part of the discussion tomorrow, yeah.
Buy a little time.
Yeah. So another thing that we've spent a decent amount of time talking about is different regionalization opportunities. We, we have the Regional Dispatch Initiative that's going on, but there are a number of other opportunities that have presented themselves with some of the surrounding communities. I think things are, we're really in early days of, of conversations. But there's a lot of interest from some of our neighboring communities on different regionalization opportunities. So that's, that's very encouraging, communities. You know, we're not alone. Everybody is facing different challenges, particularly with, with public health. That, that is an area that, you know, it's very challenging as a result of the pandemic. And our, our neighbors are struggling with the same issues as we are. So, so people are really open to, to talking about how to partner to provide the best services to the community.
If we don't all hang together, we'll all hang separately.
That's good. Mary, did you have a question?
Yeah, I did. So this, these regionalization opportunities, hopefully they give us increased services at lower cost. Is that a fair?
That, that would be ideal. We're certainly not looking to have higher costs. I think in, I think it really depends. It might be for a similar cost. So in, in public health, for instance, and, and there are some other bullet points. One of the things that everybody is struggling with is the increased need for mental health services. And that's, I, I don't think anybody feels that they're providing the level of service, any community providing the level of service that is needed. And so we may be spending the same amount of money but getting an increased service. So that's, that's just an example.
So it would be increased service, but maybe cost neutral?
Yes, yeah. We're certainly not looking to spend more money.
Okay, good.
But we might not always be saving money.
Well, along those lines, I was confused where it says add funds for part-time regional public health nurse. My impression was that we were contracting through Emerson Hospital and then someone left and now we have to contract a different way. And then we decided to hire someone. But I thought that it would be funding neutral. I didn't know we were going to add funds for it.
So, yes, we, for many years, we had a contract service through Emerson Home Care for about 10 hours of nursing service per week. As you can imagine, the last couple of years during the pandemic, the need has been much greater. Really, 40-plus hours per week is what, what has been needed.
And it's not declining now that?
It is not declining. It's being replaced. The, you know, the focus has shifted, but, but the need is pretty constant for, for additional nursing services. So we do have a short-term solution that is contract-based. And in fiscal 24, we have included funds for a public health nurse. We, we are in discussions with a neighboring community to, to partner and potentially be able to, between two communities, hire a full-time person. That would be half-time here, about half-time. And so that, that is something that is, it's just becoming more and more important in, in this day and age to, to have that service available. I know we're kind of jumping around a little bit here. In terms of ARPA funding, we do have some proposed, and I'll go through that in greater detail. But as you know, the Economic Vitality Manager position, that is, is to be funded through ARPA in the current year, going into next year. And also next year, we're looking at some additional funding from ARPA for, for GIS services. So just because we want to make sure our GIS database is, is up to date, that information is accurate, that that information is available to boards and committees making decisions, that it's available, that we have good data that's available to staff.
That is such a key resource. I'm in there every week.
Yeah. And, and what, what has your experience been? Has it been?
High quality.
And, and the data is?
On the other hand, I don't know whether the data I'm looking at is accurate, but it, it's pretty comprehensive. It's always useful.
And so what I'm hearing from staff is that in certain areas, it's not accurate. It's not as accurate as it should be. And we'd like to get that corrected because we rely on that data, day in and day out. And, yeah, we need to have good data.
So is this a project that's going to update the data for the next foreseeable years? Or is this a, pretty much a permanent position that once ARPA funds run out, we'll have to fund it in the budget?
So we're, we're looking at this as, as a short-term need and that once the, the data is brought up to a standard, that it would be maintained with, with our regular position. So one of our GIS analysts is retiring. And she's actually retiring next month, but she will stay on in a part-time capacity to be working on, on this data. But at this point in time, we don't necessarily see that as an ongoing need.
Okay.
Now, is this, is the inaccuracy property boundary lines? Or is it some other issue?
I, I would say, in most cases, some other issue. And it more with utilities, with, with, yeah.
Utilities?
Utilities.
Yeah, and those are layers that the public can't always see.
But they're not publicly available.
No, because of so many security risks.
But I mean, but for whatever reason, I, I've never seen any of the utilities on the GIS system. But that's, that's what we're talking about is.
I found the property records to be very up to date. They're impressive.
Yeah, they're good.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, really.
So.
So this is basically an engineering thing, then?
It is. And that's, that's who we're hearing from mostly, that, that it is Public Works.
Yeah.
So one of the significant adds to the fiscal 24 budget is in the Fire Department. In the, in the Command Staff, we're looking to add a second Assistant Chief position. So in the, in the Fire Department, the Command Staff, we have, the, the non-union Command Staff is the Fire Chief and one Assistant Fire Chief. On the police side, by contrast, we have a Police Chief, we have a Captain, and we have two Lieutenants, all non-union positions. The, the departments are roughly the same size in, in terms of personnel. And we're looking to add a second Fire Chief position. And the, one of the, the main impetus is here is we need to be looking at the feasibility of providing advanced life support ALS ambulance service. We currently provide BLS service, which is basic life support, and we contract with a third-party entity for, for the ALS, for the paramedic service. It is a, the, the entity provides this service regionally. And I'm not sure how many years ago, Henry, you probably remember when Emerson Hospital provided the, the, the paramedic-level service.
That was probably, I don't know, 20, 20, I think maybe when, when Steve Carter was the head of the ABS at Emerson. So that goes, that goes back quite a ways, just before he became the Fire Chief in Lincoln.
So we, we have a vulnerability with having that service through a third party. And there have been concerns over the years about the, the long-term viability of that service.
That's like the most critical service.
It is, it is, it is the most critical service.
Response time should be as short as possible, yeah.
Yes, and so this is something we would like to investigate the feasibility. There are offsetting, there's an offsetting funding source here because right now, if you are transported through an ALS transport, the, the fee for that service is going to this other provider. And so if we were able to provide that, then we would collect that fee and it would offset.
But then you need the skills on staff.
Yes.
But is the, is the ambulance service of the Fire Department a revenue generating, a net revenue generator?
No.
No?
I, I would say we don't track it, we don't track it that way.
Because for almost every ambulance trip, you get a payment from health, medical insurance from somebody, right? For Medicare, Medicaid, or private health insurance. And, and that's, that's, that's almost the major activity of the Fire Department, isn't it? Ambulance runs.
Yes, it is.
If you don't have fires anymore.
Well, we do, we don't, we, we don't have as many as we used to.
But I mean, the, the point is that if it's a, if it, if it actually is a net generator of revenue, probably the incremental cost of having paramedics versus EMTs is not that great.
So that, that's something, that requires a lot of detailed analysis. And we would like to start that process because we, we think that, that it's a, it's a vulnerability.
And right now, you have the firefighters are all, and I think all the police officers are also certified as EMTs, aren't they?
So all of the fire personnel, they are EMTs and police, I would say, most if, if not.
So we don't have actually specialists, we don't have an EM, we don't have an emergency medical service in our Fire Department. It's just, it's, the firefighters ride the ambulance.
That's correct. And one thing that, that I wanted to mention is we, we definitely lose fire personnel because we do not provide a paramedic-level service. One of, one of the reasons we have people leave is because they are certified as paramedics and they would like to practice at that level and they can't do that here. And so, and we do expect that that will continue, that, that we will lose people, that this is a great place to come and train, but if, if they want to work as a paramedic and they're not able to do that here, they certainly have less job satisfaction. And we don't want that. We, we want, we want to be able to retain our terrific fire personnel and, you know, provide them the opportunities to be happy in the work that they do here.
So would the current EMTs have a choice of getting trained to be ALS or, or not? And, I mean, have, has the union have an official position on this or?
Yeah, so this, tho, those are all issues that we would have to explore further. We're just, we're not at that.
Okay.
At that level yet. We have not had any discussions with the union about this. But this is work that we would like to start in fiscal 24.
Is that related, though, to the, having the second Assistant Chief? Or is that a separate issue?
One of the main reasons, the, the reasons that we are interested in this position and feel that it's justified at this time, I think are, well, there, there are many reasons. We need additional management structure at, at the Fire Department to be able to manage the workload of, of the Fire Department. There's a lot of training and just an increased level of activity. But we, we would also like to be able to investigate the feasibility of the paramedic-level service that we would expect would be beneficial to the community. And, and we just, we need additional increases in, in the management at the Fire Department to be able to.
But the, but the paramedical service would not involve, aside from the Assistant Chief, would not involve additional personnel? It would just be having the personnel be qualified at a higher level?
That is likely true, yes. So I'm, I'm not bringing forward a proposal to implement the service. So a lot of the, the questions, they're, they're good questions, but we, we're just, again, at the beginning, not, we're, we're not even at the beginning stages of, of this. We're, we're trying to become ready to start this.
Includes a provision for an additional Assistant Chief?
Yes, it does. So then on the Police Department side, we've talked about this before. We have a social worker that works part-time with the Police Department. It's a grant-funded position. There's been a huge benefit to having this person available to respond to certain calls with, within the community. Maybe I've talked more to the Finance Committee about this than to you. We would like to be able to keep this person regardless of the, the availability of the grant because of, of the benefit to the community and to the department. We do have an opportunity to reapply for the grant, but in the event that the grant application is not successful, we would like to be able to retain this person. So that is included in the budget. We've talked about the, the public health nurse. There, there is funding in the budget for additional clerical support for high-traffic areas, particularly building inspections. I think we've talked about this, actually, when the DPLM Department was in to meet with you a few meetings back. Building inspections is very busy. You've seen, we've had increased new growth. That's a, an indication of the busyness of, of that department. And so we're looking at adding some additional clerical hours there. And then in the budget, we're looking to build back in our Tier One capital to our pre-pandemic spending levels, which were about two, was about $2 million per year. That had been cut back significantly during the pandemic in response to a request from the Finance Committee to, to not cut services and potentially look at cutting back on capital. We've had trouble getting back to, to those levels, the pre-pandemic spending levels. It's very important for us to, to be doing that because if we're not replacing equipment and vehicles timely, we're incurring additional maintenance costs. If we're not replacing our vehicles, we're not able to meet the community's commitment to an electric fleet. So we're, we're looking to, to get back to that. If you flip to page four, I'll try to get back on track and go through this a little quickly. One of the other initiatives that, that we've started but haven't completed is a centralization of budget and oversight of both technology and facility spending. And so we're looking to close the loop on that and, and put all of our technology spending under the Chief Technology Officer. So there, there can be greater oversight, that we're making sure that we're coordinating different technology efforts, that we're appropriately funding for all of our technology costs and that we're able to, to better plan for the future.
These would be one-time costs?
No, the, these are ongoing costs. So we have about $300,000 within the existing budget for technology that is in different cost centers. And we're looking just to pull that out and put it under technology.
Okay, so it's a reclassification.
I was gonna say, it shouldn't be incremental spending. I think we should save money doing this.
Similar with facilities.
Oh, good. Okay.
Because we want we want to make sure that we're appropriately budgeting for everything from utilities and and maintenance.
Evidence of that when I was reviewing the town warrants, yeah, it's just.
So it's not a net increase in either of these areas. You're just reallocating to different departments. Oh, that's wonderful. Okay.
No, centralizing purchasing for these functions is a big win.
Great idea.
And technology. Great. Okay.
So so in facilities, again, it's everything from utilities, maintenance costs, custodial services. So we have we have a mix of both contracted and the phone bills.
That's an FY25. This gets into a lot of the elevator inspections, fire inspections.
Well, you probably have two year contracts, right, on the phone. So but, you know, I look at the number of line items that I see on payments for the cellular bills. It's like, you know, every person's just got off and got their own plan and there you go. Yeah.
Centers of excellence.
Okay, that's a good way to put it, I guess.
So the the next several slides in the presentation really are just the different cost centers. And you you can see what what's happening with what the original request was, what what the total and reductions.
So we're taking money away from you, huh?
From, well, that must be a mistake. No, that's that is from the request, the adjustment from the from the request.
I got it. Okay, so this is the revised budget.
Right.
Okay, so it's not a FY24 versus 23.
No.
Because that's what I would like to see.
Yeah, I was confused about that. Do you have that chart, 24 versus 23?
Well, we we do. We don't have it.
No, but maybe you couldn't email it to us.
I have two questions about this, Carrie. One is in the public works, I don't see anything here for, I don't know if you've discussed it or not, but updating the 2002 wastewater management study. Because, as you know, that comes up often when we're talking about affordable housing. I don't see that. Is that something that was talked about in your conversations with with Alan Cathcart or?
Yeah, so that if that is included in fiscal 24, it would be in the sewer enterprise budget, not in in the general fund budget.
Okay, so that's where I should look for it.
And and that process, we're starting in January, the the review of those budgets.
Okay, good.
I'm not. I know he and I had talked about it. Is it is it the right time to to do that?
Yep.
So we we will get into that through the enterprise.
And my second question is, I see you've got, I think, 75,000 for employee wellness and training.
And so that is, that's really another where we've pulled out from all individual budgets. So we could have some central oversight of of that because we do. There are certainly instances where some departments are better at providing for professional development opportunities, for the funding for professional development opportunities. And we'd like all employees to have the same access or similar access to professional development. And so that would be in a central location versus within individual budgets.
But is this enough, you think? Because remember we heard tonight that we might want more training around DEI. And we've talked about customer service training. So I'm wondering is that if that's enough?
It it's certainly more than what we've had in the past. So I think we'd like to start with that and and then see.
So just going back for a minute, I really appreciate getting all this information and especially on the capital plan. There's a lot of information and we haven't gotten to that yet. I had a quick question on page two. Where you're talking about the the goals. And it says, great place to work, independent classification and compensation review, funding for results needed. What does that mean, funding for results needed?
So that that means we need to make provisions in the salary reserve to to be able to implement.
Ah, salary reserve.
And and we have. We have made those provisions.
Okay, so so we already know what we need in the salary reserve, pretty much estimate.
We have an estimate.
Okay, so we don't need any specific warrant article for that or anything?
No.
Okay.
So do you do you want to look at capital or look at ARPA, which is more operating?
I think ARPA first.
ARPA, okay. So there there are two sheets in the packet on ARPA. I think it probably makes sense for us to look at fiscal 23, just to give you an update where we are.
I haven't spent anything.
So in in fiscal 23, we did dedicate half million dollars for affordable housing. That that has been committed to the Affordable Housing Trust. We have $200,000 for transportation initiatives. Part of that funds the increase in the the transportation planner in fiscal 23 was funded at halftime. And we have somebody working full time, so part of the funds goes there. The rest will be for a request for proposals for the comprehensive transportation study. I think there was a note in the weekly report from DPLM that there is a draft of that request for qualifications that has been has been drafted by staff and is has been reviewed by multiple departments and forwarded to the transportation to TAC to review. And and TAC is providing comment to that. And then my expectation is we would then provide an update to the select board before we put that out to to bid. And I I think we have TAC tentatively scheduled to come to select board in January, end of January, maybe. I think that was the hope and and that that
Yeah.
that RFQ would be available at that time.
Now it's changed, but yeah.
The next item is $125,000 for economic development initiatives. As the board knows, we put together a job description for an economic vitality manager. We did receive input from the economic, the EVC, the business partnership, the chamber, as well as several staff members, and that position is currently advertised. So we we do hope we would. We definitely won't be doing any interviewing until January, but we would hope that maybe by sometime in February, we would have somebody on staff.
And you probably won't spend the full allocation.
No.
Right.
No.
And Carrie, that's advertised for a full time position?
It is. Yeah. $30,000 for affordable housing. We haven't done anything with this. When I when I brought this list to you initially, there there definitely was some discussion about this item. And we really haven't advanced this any further.
This is for staff?
This is.
Staff support?
Right.
Okay.
Not not a not an FTE, but
Something.
Something. And and we haven't fleshed that out, so we have not done anything with that. Next is $25,000 for cell service. And as I mentioned earlier in the in the meeting, we have, we are in the process of reengaging the consultant that put together the last plan, which really was probably 10 years ago or so. And we'll be coming to you in January to talk about next steps there with cell service. And then finally, $20,000 for arts. There was also an an item in the weekly report that Beth Williams, the economic vitality and tourism manager, was successful in getting accepted into a a public community art program. It's a it'll be funded 100% through a grant. And it will put us in line for other grant opportunities for public art. And we hope that when she finishes that program, we'll have a better sense of how we might put this money to better use.
And this might be matching funds.
It might be. It might be matching funds. Yeah. So I think we're making some decent progress on fiscal 23. And again, the nice thing with the ARPA funds is they're not technically appropriated. While we program them into a fiscal year, if things aren't moving as fast or moving faster, we have, yeah, they can roll forward. So then looking at fiscal 24, I identified the target target of $1,320,000. That's 25% of of what was available and came up with some ideas based on feedback from a variety of of different sources. The biggest item here is is $500,000 for middle school solar. Originally, I was not thinking this would be a fiscal 24 item, or maybe I was hoping it would be fiscal 25 because I really would like this funding to go to transportation. I think that's one of the the biggest things that that we're hearing about is is the need for transportation. So the the issue in in talking with Dave Wood at at the light plant is that we probably need this in in fiscal 24. And the reason that I'm suggesting a half a million dollars is building solar arrays. It's just a very expensive proposition. What we have proposed at the middle school is about 5.5 million dollars. That does not include any battery storage at this time. And it's it's very expensive for governments to to build solar arrays because the the tax incentives that are available to private developers mean nothing to municipality. We can't take advantage of that. And so in in talking to Dave, he had requested up to a half million dollars to to make this a more feasible, financially feasible undertaking for the light plant because the the solar array will be belong to the light plant, funded from light plant revenue.
But what I'm just curious about is all this federal infrastructure funding, can't the town apply for and get any of this? I mean, it just seems like this is a perfect type of project.
So we're certainly looking at all of those opportunities. And if there is a grant opportunity that is available, we will be going after it. But we don't. We don't know. What we do know is this project is very important to the community. And we want to make sure that we are in a position to make it happen.
Carrie, I was I was at the CMLB board the other morning. And if we add up the cost of the solar panels, the canopy and the storage, they're thinking of coming to the town with an article for the amount of about 10,000, 10 million altogether.
Including the battery storage.
Including battery. And and the debate was, should we include the batteries now or should we split it up and come year after year? And I was urging them to come with it all at once. So if it's a $10 million investment, does $500,000 really help? It's like, it's such a small amount compared to what we need. I'm wondering. It's it's not. I don't think it's going to have that big of an impact on the rate change because of the $10 million investment. That that 500,000 would help that much.
So this is this is the request at this time.
Okay.
But if there's if 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 it can be done cheaper by private companies because of, you know, grants and and tax benefits, why would the town want to do it rather than have a private contractor do it?
So that's a very good question. I think another another one of your agenda items for January was the the update from the light plant.
That's right.
And
And the solar plan, which we're due to get.
Yeah.
Which what? Solar plan?
We're due to get a solar plan.
Yeah.
The deadline was the end of this calendar year.
You're talking about specifically related to the middle school or just in general?
General.
Right.
General.
But the the school would be part of the plan.
But I what what I don't understand, aside from the the political aspects of it, why is it any better to build a solar facility on top of the middle school than to build it anyplace else in town? Because that the product does not serve the school at all. It's just a place like the roof of a building and you could put the solar panels on the roof of any building or any other place in town and would have exactly the same effect. And it really has nothing at all to do with the school, except for people to think that somehow that makes the school energy neutral.
Yeah, I'd like to table this discussion for when we have the light plant in front of us. I mean, I think that we'll have a dedicated agenda item.
Yeah.
Let's just talk about the different funding proposals for 2020.
Yeah, if I could just make one comment about that. So we have, I believe, we have eight electric circuits in town. We have some circuits that are completely saturated, others that can handle additional solar. The the middle school property happens to be on a circuit that can handle additional solar. And so that's that's why it makes that site.
A good site. It's a good site.
It's a good site.
And it's a big roof.
Yeah.
And there's a big parking lot that you can put stuff above. Yeah.
It's being built now.
And it's being built. Yeah. So there are lots of things in favor.
But the 500,000 can be debated.
Yeah, that I think.
I think it is debatable.
Yeah. Okay. And and if it if it doesn't go there, my suggestion would be transportation. We don't have specific initiatives yet, but we would expect the the study to inform the future future development. The next item is $150,000 for a level three charging station at public safety. We have a growing electric fleet and we need to be able to fast charge that that fleet. And and that is, unfortunately, that's the cost of of a level three charging station. One one station.
What? Three times the cost of a vehicle?
I think it can serve more than one vehicle at a time, but it's.
Oh, okay. That's what I was checking. Okay.
Have you seen the charging station at the prison, in the parking lot at the prison?
Yeah. Yeah.
The next item is $150,000 for facilities study. As we've talked about before, we have $150,000 that was appropriated in 2014 to look at the Kaiser Road campus. As as we've talked about that, we've just had real brief conversations. You know, we need, we also need a a plan for public safety. And we thought it probably makes sense to be looking at both of those at the same time. And and so that would be additional funding to take a comprehensive look and look at both public public works and public safety. $130,000 for park improvements at Emerson Park, the the basketball courts and the tennis courts and at Ride Out Baseball and Tennis Court rehabilitation. Both of these projects are currently in our capital improvement planning. And we would look to fund these with ARPA versus local money. $100,000 for to investigate Stormwater Management Fund, evaluate the feasibility of the fund and
I think this is a great idea. Working with the White Pond people, how much that's a problem for the White Pond. And I'm sure it's a, you know, stormwater runoff in ponds and all around town has to be a problem. So if we can find a solution, that would be great.
Yeah.
I I agree, but I'm not sure. So this 100,000 would go to like a consultant to do a study? Is that what this would be?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, you have some expertise in house, but you really need someone who's done this in other communities because Concord is unique. And so you wouldn't necessarily copy how another town did it. But the main advantage of a stormwater management fee is lack of competition for resources, that it's a dedicated resource stream for some of the issues that you mentioned. that it's a dedicated resource stream for some of the issues that you mentioned.
Right.
It doesn't have to, yeah, budget discussion every year.
Well, I'm, I'm in favor of, of having the enterprise fund, but I'm trying to figure out why we need to hire a consultant, what they need, what do they need to find out? Like when we set up an enterprise fund for water, sewer, et cetera, et cetera, do we need a consultant every single time we set up one of those enterprise funds?
In this case, DPW recommended it because they didn't have the staff that could do it. It's, it's a mix of engineering and conservation, if you will. They didn't believe they had the in-house expertise. There are a small number of communities that have done this that can be served, you know, serve as a model. And then a consultant would be best served to go visit those communities, take what they thought was appropriate, bring it back to Concord. And it's, it's going to very much be a public discussion, you know, a lot of public meetings on this.
Oh, okay. I'm just trying to figure out, yeah, what exactly they're going to do that's, what is different about this enterprise fund and setting it up than setting up when we set up the water enterprise fund?
You're not selling a product. You're not selling water. You're not selling or collecting sewer. Stormwater, there's different models, but the most common model is a flat fee for residential.
Okay.
And then a impervious surface driven cost model for businesses or for commercial. So it's, it's complex.
So you need to model different options for how to collect the fee?
Yeah, you'd need to work very closely with your GIS models of the whole town. Look at the NIPD's requirements for stormwater management runoff. It's a big job.
Okay.
Once you've got it done, then it kind of runs on itself.
Okay. Different for public and private roads? You'd have to.
That's a good question. I don't know how you would handle.
See, that's something you'd have to find out.
That'd be one of the things, yeah, you would want to find out.
$125,000 for that item then.
Anyway.
Yeah. Okay.
Lot of questions. Yeah.
Up next, we have $100,000 for municipal buildings' energy audit. Bob, do you want to say anything about that?
You have over a half, over a dozen municipal buildings, which is, you know, well, well above average for most towns of your size.
18.
Yeah. Just amazing. And I dare say the vast majority of them are not energy efficient because no one's ever looked at it this way. I'm sure this building is a horrible example of that.
Yes.
So something called an ESCO, an energy services company, that has a certain chapter of procurement that Gail knows, you can go out and find someone for 75 to 100,000 to study all your buildings, probably not schools. We haven't talked to schools about this. And they will come back with a, with a grid of improvements to be made and break even. So the break even consists of, you know, LED lights are usually the cheapest thing. The break even for those are usually two or three years. It costs you X and you're going to save enough energy in two or three years to pay for them. Other things, ground, heat water, ground pumps, used to have an 80-year break even when I first looked at this. I think they're down to more 15 years now. But you're going to be given a menu of all the improvements that each building could make and their projected savings over some period of time. So again, that's a highly technical and complex, one-time piece of work. And then part two of that, if you procure it this way, is the money is never spent if you hire that company to do the improvements. So it's just seed money as a placeholder. So if you don't do the work or you don't use them, you pay them for one, you know, they're, they're in and out of town. But after they've gone to all the buildings, you'd be foolish not to use them because they're going to be in a position to do a nice job, which is why the procurement has to be structured in a way that you, it's not low bidder in this case. You really have a committee that's put together with a lot of diverse people that, you know, pick the expert. And there's probably eight companies in Massachusetts that'll bid on this. Most of them are very good.
And do they guarantee the?
Yes, they do. They will guarantee you 10 or 15 years' worth of savings and if it doesn't meet that, they will pay you.
Wow.
So it's, it's a nice and.
So if they're not, if, if they're really bad at it, they'll be out of business.
That's exactly right.
And won't be able to pay.
That's right.
And, you know, Carrie's taken a nice first step. By centralizing the energy costs, you can start to wrap your arms around some of these things that are just disparate and not seen right now.
So next, $75,000 for DEI initiatives. We talked about that a little bit under a previous agenda item. Next, $50,000. I've, I've noted this as water due diligence, so I think the, the board is aware that we are investigating the feasibility of joining MWRA for water. Probably most of, of any due diligence expense would be borne by the Water Enterprise Fund, but we do have a small percentage of the community that is not currently served by municipal water. It's about 5%. There's definitely an interest or varying level of degree of interest of residents in those areas not serviced to have access to municipal water. And at this point in time, they're generally not part of the, the service territory because it was deemed, providing service to them was deemed uneconomic or unfeasible. But there, there may be opportunities if we were to join MWRA, how water would come into the community, it, it may make it easier to service these areas. And I just wanted to have something to be able to look at the feasibility of, of that or to take advantage of, of opportunities.
And that saves us the money of the new treatment plant at Nagog?
If, if we were to join MWRA, we would not. I mean, this is years out, so we'll, we'll have, have to see, but yes.
But isn't that part of what's driving the movement in favor of MWRA is the, the great expense of bringing that water up to its current standards?
I would say that's fair, yes. And then $40,000 for GIS. We, we talked about this. This would be the funding for the, to, to work on the, to work on data. And then finally, $25,000 I've identified for strategic planning. The thought here is, as I mentioned earlier, our organization is growing significantly and it would be helpful to understand what we're trying to get to other than just trying to grow. Right? At, at some point, we can't be all things to all people. We can't provide every single service that every resident would like. I, I think it's important for us to, to be doing some strategic planning to understand what we're, what we're trying to be. The school undergoes a strategic planning process every five years or so. I think this is what, what got me thinking about this initially. They are currently in the process of updating their strategic plan. We don't have, we have a lot of planning documents, but we don't, we don't have a strategic plan for the organization. And I think this would be important and it would certainly help us identify the outer bounds of what we're trying to be and how we're, how we're going to get there. So that, that is sort of how I've laid out fiscal 24. We would be looking particularly for any of these larger expenditures as we're getting closer to, to implementing that. We would be providing updates to the select board, get your feedback, make sure you're aware of our progress. That's, that's where we are.
So my concern here is that there are 10 different items on this list. So it's a lot of balls in the air and I just worry, I mean, I think they're all worthwhile things, but I could also imagine these 10 being spread over three years in that, and then to free up funds, you know, to do something like contribute to the stabilization fund for the middle school. You know, I just keep thinking of the other big items, right? Something strategic as opposed to lots of tactical, like, oh, this didn't get into the budget, so let's, let's fill in the blank here. We've always wanted to do this, let's do that. And it's a lot of miscellaneous items as opposed to something strategic. So that, that's my main concern when I look at, at this. And I also though, have been kind of leading the charge on trying to say that we shouldn't look at ARPA as strategic funds, that we should instead roll it into things and then look at our overall, you know, needs and, and just fund those with all available funds, including ARPA. And, and so that's where, again, I come back to, well, what are the, the strategic barriers that we're up against? And, you know, I see this giant capital expense as, as one of the biggest challenges we've got in the town right now.
And in the strategic plan, what is the difference between that and say, Envision Concord?
So.
Envision Concord is for the town overall. This is for the.
For the.
For the organization, yeah.
For, yeah.
Yeah.
For the government organization. Okay.
Professional staff.
Okay.
I mean, I think that that, by the way, I'm very, I'm strongly in favor of that. And I think of that as the integral to the town manager's budget, that I would like to see that, not as a add-on for ARPA.
It may end up costing a lot more than that.
Well, I assume.
Yeah. But anyway.
I don't know what the schools are spending.
The, the schools actually are not spending anything this year.
They're doing it all, do it yourself.
Right. But they, they had intended to use the same consultant that, that they've used in the past, but there was a scheduling conflict or, or something. But they, part of what they had done in the past was sort of train the trainer and so they are able to manage it in-house.
But they will have to carve out a lot of administrative time to put this together.
Yes. And the superintendent actually committed to providing some assistance for us to get started if, if we were interested in.
In doing one here.
Yeah.
That's great. So Carrie, you know, we also have to keep in mind the date by which ARPA funds have to be committed, right?
You know, we, we actually don't necessarily because we technically took all of our ARPA in as lost revenue. We're, we're trying to.
This is all just be in the spirit.
Yeah, follow the spirit, right? But.
Right. Okay, I remember that now.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I guess what, what we're trying to do here is, and maybe in any given year, have one larger capital expense and funding to either kickstart initiatives or do some work to help us be more efficient, effective, competitive, you know, trying to do a mix of things.
Well, again, thanks for all this information. I think it's really helpful. And I, I told you before the meeting, I had like a million questions and basically.
To half a million?
No, we got them all answered.
We still have the capital plan.
Yeah, I know, but still, got a lot of them answered.
Yeah, we're not done yet.
Okay.
Slide 12.
Bob, Bob has done yeoman's work on the capital plan and he'll take us through that.
The capital plan is definitely as much art as science. You sort of see the science here. You see a lot of math, a lot of numbers and, and order, but what a capital plan really reflects is the values of the organization and the priorities of the organization. Every department lined up things they wanted to do, whether it was funded with capital, with ARPA, with debt, they sort of don't care. They just know there's work that needs to be done. So then the, sort of the science to it is how to put that together. But Matt, you touched on what's, one of the most important things of a capital plan is do you have the bandwidth to implement what's on this paper?
Yeah.
And for instance, it's far easier to buy equipment than it is to do a study. There's far less staff hours, you know, it's 10 hours, two, two times five and you're done. So this tries to be a blend. So when some things got on Carrie's list for ARPA, they were on the capital plan, plan, but Carrie said, you know, these would make the most sense to do with ARPA. You can also see that capital has grown, as Carrie mentioned earlier tonight, from a million and a half to close to a million and three quarters, the plan to go to 2 million next year and then maybe two and a quarter the year after, just to try to reestablish the fact that capital is really important. Just to skip ahead to the next slide because it's really part of the same discussion, debt is just a way to pay for capital. It would be ideal for the town not to, not to borrow maintenance with debt and annual road work is maintenance. You have two or $3 million you need to do every year. You could do more, you could do less. But if you do $3 million instead of two, it doesn't mean next year you don't have to do any. So it, it really is maintenance. It's, it's road work. It would be ideal not to borrow for that because you're spending money every year. And when you're spending interest, especially at higher interest rates, that's road work that's not getting done. But that's going to be a job to work out. This capital plan has reduced the amount of small items that are going in towards debt. I think it's 200,000 in the first year and it, and it grows after that, which is, which is a good start. But roads are a real tough, roads are the hardest thing to do in this capital plan to really put the amount of resources towards them. You know, I'm told that, you know, the town can't effectively put 15 or 25 million to work right away if you gave it to them, but that's about the order of magnitude of just catch-up money that the town has fallen behind.
Have the road costs stabilized? I know that they really exploded last year.
I don't, I don't think so. Everyone's going to know the spring when the next set of bids go out. But, you know, 40% inflation in that area was pretty common. And that's the sneaky part of a capital plan is you're going to get a lot less, for instance in roads, you're just going to get less work done. You're not going to be able to afford to spend 40% more dollars, you're just going to get less work and then you're going to fall further behind. So this capital plan, you know, had a lot of discussion with a lot of departments, you can sort of see the results here. But it's now in a place where this discussion can happen frequently. It's harder in Concord because you only have one town meeting a year. Many towns have two. And a capital discussion goes to town meeting twice a year. And, you know, a capital plan is not something you just sit down and do once a year. It's a daily thing. You know, it's, it's kind of like an operating budget, maybe not quite, but your capital needs change frequently during the year, but you can only go to town meeting once a year here in Concord. So that, that's another challenge to this. I don't know if there's any specific questions in any aspects, but it, it tries to spread it out among departments. It tries to address the bandwidth that all departments have to do things, especially DPW because they're a big user of capital. And Carrie mentioned a couple of what I think of the highlights, which is there's some seed money for projects that are really important. The, you know, town building facility, whatever that may be, for public safety, public works is analogous to the middle school. So you're starting a process, you're starting seed money. I think the Stormwater Enterprise Fund and the performance contracting or the energy management are both money savers in the long run or important things to make sure resources are dedicated to important work. And it's, it's conceptually nice to use ARPA or one-time money to start something, but then you have to understand your budget is responsible for it on an ongoing basis or an enterprise will be responsible for it. So, you know, Carrie's done a nice job putting this together from a lot of different angles. It's, it's a lot harder than it looks on paper.
So you mentioned, Bob, thank you. This is great. You mentioned that it would be probably better to do some of our road maintenance with pay-go money? Is that right?
If, if it was possible.
Is it? I guess.
Only if it took a few years off from doing other things. No, it's, it's really hard. I think you start by taking baby steps because I don't think the big step is something, you know, if you could set aside $5 million extra in a, in a given budget, then you could catch up. But you, when are you going to do that? So I think you just take incremental baby steps. You do the best you can over the next two, three years.
Pretty much what I see.
And you get yourself in a good habit. You make sure that capital always has a good seat at the table, at the budget table, even in bad times. It's important to protect capital. It's your infrastructure. And then you work towards objectives that you think are important. It's, it's not a critically horrible thing to borrow for road work. It'd just be nice if you didn't have to.
Do you think it's also important, we have a guardrail that's the 5% of the operating budget for, for tier one and tier two capital, right? Do you think it would be worthwhile to revisit that and see if, if that makes sense? And if it does, what kind of capital should fall in that? Because I think.
Yeah.
I think if we go way back, the original idea was to allocate money every year to refresh your assets. And then it kind of got a leak in it. your assets, and then it kind of got a leak in it when we started using it for rec money as opposed to, you know, kind of got a breach in the policy. And I'm wondering if it's time to revisit that and.
It is important, and it's not something that I've done or or have seen done, but it's really important to distinguish capital from something new versus something old.
Yes.
So, because if you had a guardrail around the something old part, that would probably work fine. But you're right, it's the new things.
Right.
You know, you're going to put into our fields, and suddenly they cost a couple million bucks, and they last 10 years instead of 20. You know, all of a sudden, you've done a lot of new things and you forgot to put as much towards the other. I I've made the comment before, and I'll repeat it, that I think it could be better served if tier two capital, let me see if I got this right, no, tier one capital was not within the town guidelines. But that's a discussion that needs to be had with the schools. Carrie is, or any town manager is, put in the position of choosing capital over operations by having it all in the same bucket.
Yes.
If it were, what's the difference? Capital and debt should be the same thing to me. Debt is just a way to finance capital. So if you're going to put a policy on debt, why don't you put the exact same or similar policy on capital? Now, that that's not excluded that, that's a whole nother story.
Right, right, I understand.
But I think conceptually, and I think I read some of the minutes of the capital committee, I think the thoughts were all there. But it didn't maybe think of the things like, well, there's always going to be competing new interests to get in the way of what we're thinking capital is. It's not just buying a fire truck every, every 10 or 15 years, or replacing equipment, or doing certain maintenance work. You know, it is things that the community wants that is new and different.
Right.
And could be a one-time cost. So I I think that having it inside the guidelines for the town is difficult. It's it's doable, and Carrie's the right person to do it. But I can see in another community with with different staff, that just being abused. You know, we don't need capital, we need staff. That's that's a poor choice to make a town manager make. Or we need to compensate staff, we can't afford capital. It's not a good choice.
Right. So how should we, how can we do that? How can, how can we revisit some of our policies that?
I think he was providing one path, which is incremental approach, right? Yeah, slowly buy it down.
Yeah, and I think to the extent that the guidelines process sort of starts in September-ish of every year.
That's a good time to bring up.
At some time after annual town meeting, some small group, schools, town, whoever else, finance committee, and you, and school committee, sits down and just talks about, what's your objective? I'm not saying anything's broken, I'm just saying you really should have that discussion.
Better ideas, right?
Yeah.
Really good idea. Quick question, well, maybe not so quick, but how, I I don't understand how we got into this position where we got so far behind on the roadwork, because I thought we did have these guardrails and these capital policies.
Yeah, I don't have a real good answer, because I've asked DPW, and and I, you know, as a, as a traveler to your fair town, I don't see bad problems. So I went over to the police department, and I said, how bad are the roads here in town, really? And they were like, it's terrible. So they would know, they're out on the roads all the time. I don't know why you spend so much money on roads, other than you're a cut-through town. You have so many major highways, major roads, you have so much traffic that's going through Concord, not to Concord. You don't get the Chapter 90 money that really reflects that. They say there's an adjustment for that in the formula, it's not really, you're not getting a sufficient.
So is that how we fell behind with Chapter 90?
Well, I think there is also during COVID.
During COVID.
Right, so the, the biggest cut to capital during COVID was to the roads budget.
They really, really.
The second issue was the Cambridge Turnpike project.
Okay.
That was funded.
A budget buster.
It was, right, it was a budget buster, and we had more than a full year's worth of road funding that was dedicated to that project.
But even before COVID, before Cambridge Turnpike, we were already getting in the hole with roadwork.
You know, I I don't, I don't think so.
Okay, so it's mainly those two things.
Our, our pavement condition index, PCI, before, before Cambridge Turnpike, I want to say was around 80, and now, what are we, high 60s?
Yeah, 80 would be really good.
They're saying high 60s.
Yeah. So it went down in, just in the last two or three years, it's gone down that much? Wow.
Yeah, I mean, we we do a lot of, had been doing a lot of small projects until Cambridge Turnpike.
Okay.
Okay, so I I want to be careful about time. We are very far over.
Yeah.
We started at this topic on time, but we've gone, I mean, and it is, of course, vital that we talk about the town budget, but any, anything else, though, before we close out? I think we've covered the.
So Carrie, I do have one question. I did see, I'm questioning whether or not you've got enough money in the reserve for salary.
Yeah, so the, any of the contracts that are settled, the fiscal '24 adjustments are included within the budget. So what's in the salary reserve, because all of our union contracts are settled through fiscal '24, is for non-union, and we would be, we actually have a significant amount of money in the current year that we would be looking to carry forward, because the intent in the current year.
Okay.
When we put the '23 budget together, we had expected that the the class and comp work would be completed and implemented in '23.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, thanks very much.
Thank you.
So now we have a briefing to vote to approve the annual local license and liquor license renewals. So there is a big list that has been provided to us in a memo from Shannon. Thanks for all of your hard work on all of these licenses. It's a lot, and especially being new, it's great. I mean, actually, your expertise shows. So any comments before we move with the motion on that? We did get a few addenda just today.
Are those the highlighted ones?
Yeah. So I think this is all.
Does everyone have a copy of the one with the highlighted?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Sure, doesn't matter, I'm going to vote for it anyway.
Okay, fine. Move to approve the local license applications and liquor license applications for renewal for 2023, as included in this updated memo from Shannon McAndrew received tonight.
Okay. Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, now I'd like to invite our town moderator, if you'd like, to step up to the podium here. So we are now going to look at the town meeting warrant articles that the select board would submit for the warrant. We have a number included in our packet. There's also a brief presentation that was provided by the Climate Action Advisory Board member Brad Hubbard Nelson regarding the new, adopting the new Specialized Stretch Energy Code. So I don't believe that it is Mr. Hubbard Nelson here, I don't believe he was able to make it, but I think tonight, it's not about deliberating on the article, right? It's really about getting it on the the list. And I know that Mr. Hubbard Nelson has been consulting with the town moderator on the wording of the article, so it's in final draft form. And then we have these other articles that are listed here. So the one, you know, the the sort of perfunctory ones about choosing town officers and committees, and the one we previously discussed about transferring the housing funds, about hearing reports, and the the one that I think we need a little bit of discussion about is the 250th celebration, because there's no amount. So we would need to have some amount by the time of the warrant, right? So is there a proposed amount that we, that we need to discuss?
We got budget proposals from each of the subcommittees, which were just assembled into a single document, I think, yesterday, and that's a number that needs to be reviewed. So I'm not ready to come up with it, but we'll be ready to come up with a number by the end of the year.
But I guess that we don't have another scheduled select board meeting before the warrant closes.
Before it closes?
Yeah. The warrant closes January 4th, our next meeting is January 9th. So I don't know if we want to put a not-to-exceed number as we've become familiar with.
I didn't, I didn't realize it was now or never.
Well, I mean, I think that this is where we would take action. I don't, I don't know what other.
It's it's not now or never, we can put a not-to-exceed number.
I don't even, I don't even have that number in front of me.
But a shock and awe, 115 million.
If I might, I don't actually think there's a problem with not having a number. If you all agree as a board that you're going to put this article on the warrant.
Yeah.
With the number to be supplied, the number just has to be supplied by the time the warrant closes.
Yeah, as if, as long as the other members are comfortable.
Wait a minute, by the time the warrant closes?
Yes.
The 4th, is that the?
The 4th of January, though.
That's right.
We're not meeting again.
No, but I just thought if the, if the select board is not concerned about what number would be placed on the warrant, we could just accept the wording as we have it and let them pick the number.
I would like to know in order of magnitude at least.
That's the thing, I would like to know if we're talking, you know, 750,000, or are we talking 7.5 million?
What's the second number you mentioned?
7.5 million, you know, I mean, I don't know, what are the, what are we talking 75,000, now, that started to sound good to me.
I wish I, I wish I had been more better prepared for this, because I don't even remember, and I don't have with me, the numbers that were, that I got on the spreadsheet this morning. So how about if we, if we pick a number in consultation with the chair, so that it will not be just something I will pick out of the air?
Well, the last time you you said it might be about 2 million dollars.
Total, but it's not, it's going to be less than that.
All right, well, we're starting to hone in on it then, that's good.
So, I mean, I, the amount in question for this next fiscal year will be not more than 750.
Oh, okay. So are people comfortable that if they put that number on the warrant?
Not to exceed, yeah.
Not to exceed 750,000?
That's much better than 2 million.
Yeah, it is.
Yes. I mean, it's still a lot of money, but.
And some of it might come back from stickers or fees or something?
Selling balloons.
Selling balloons.
Fundraising.
Fundraising.
And what is the source of the money? Because don't we have to also identify a source of those funds for any article?
I believe the article.
Already states.
It already states it, from.
No.
Go to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds as sum of money to pay, et cetera.
Okay, raise and appropriate or transfer from.
So that means we can figure it out later.
Free cash, or is there?
I think that means.
Do we need to?
You don't have to decide that until you have the motion, you know, if you have, if you, a town meeting will know you're going to talk about funding this project in an amount of money not to exceed this number, and it's either going to be appropriated or it's going to be transferred from available funds or some combination thereof, and you'll decide by the time you move the article at town meeting exactly how that's going to happen.
Okay, I'm comfortable with that.
So then, back to the first article that I mentioned about the Specialized Stretch Energy Code, you can see on page 239 of our very brief packet this week, the proposed text, and I believe that there's one addition, I think, that has been, that is a result of the discussions that you've had.
I'm sorry, you're talking about the Specialized Stretch Code?
Yes.
Yeah, but the only suggestion that I, that was a.
Just a public reference.
Yeah, just a reference to the regulations where you could actually find that stretch code. It's going to be too long to actually print it in the warrant.
Right.
But there could certainly be a citation to it, A, for clarity of what it is that the town is being asked to enact, and B, so if anybody's curious, when they look at the warrant, they could go look up those code and mass regulations and see what that stretch code looks like.
Right, and then for something like this at town meeting, a handout is going to be essential.
Yep.
So that's where mostly the information is going to be. So, and and one of the things that we did was look back at the 2010 town meeting where we adopted the Stretch Energy Code, and just to see, first of all, what body brought it to town meeting, because there was some debate about whether the planning board should, or whether it should be in a planning board hearing, and it turned out that it was moved by a member of CSEC at that time, and that it was a select board-sponsored article, and it was discussed at the select board hearing. So that's why it's before us.
Okay.
Thank you.
So there's a precedent.
I was wondering, okay, good.
So I think I can do all of these in one motion, when you're, when you're ready.
If any further points for us before we move to put these, to request these to be put on the warrant?
No, I don't think so. I I will confess, I was looking for the packet online yesterday, and I couldn't find it. So I haven't actually looked at your list, but.
Okay, well, the list is the one that I, I mentioned, so the Specialized Stretch Energy Code, the hearing, choosing officers, the transfer of the Affordable Housing Funds, the hearing and acting upon the reports of town officers and committees, and then the appropriation for the 250th, not to exceed 750 grand.
All looks good, the transfer of the housing funds. Is this redundant to the, the Transfer Housing Funds article, is that redundant to the article that's in the special town meeting warrant?
No, no.
It's not, okay.
Basically, this is the other half of it.
Okay, got it.
So we're putting in the reserve fund, and now we're taking it out of the reserve fund, and we're putting it in the Affordable Housing Trust.
Oh, you're going to give it to the Affordable Housing Trust, got it, okay, yes.
So the one question I had about the transfer of housing funds is the very last sentence under the explanation, and I was wondering if that's necessary to be included.
Is that in the Affordable Housing Trust article?
Yes, under the transfer of.
It's not, it doesn't do any harm, but it doesn't do any harm to have it there, but it's not necessary, because that's a, it would be an act of town meeting that remains in effect until such time as town meeting does something else.
Yeah.
But actually, isn't it the case that, oh, okay, of that article, right, never mind. And then what about the, and the other article about returning the funds from the, sorry, the reserve fund, this is, this is the funds that are from, that were set aside for, for, by the town, but then there was the reserve fund from the CPC, and that's going to be a finance committee article, right?
No, CPC is submitting that article.
Okay, but don't we need to put it on the warrant? Is, does the CPC a standing, I mean, a committee that's got standing to put something on the warrant?
They do, actually, but, but, you know, in in years past, the procedure has been, if there's an article that the select board wishes to sponsor, you would typically take a vote on that, but the.
Would we do it after the warrant closes or before?
You would usually, it doesn't really matter.
Okay, well, then, we don't need to take action tonight, that's the main thing.
Yeah, it doesn't really matter, and the.
Because we can endorse articles, and we'll endorse.
Yes, yes, if they're submitted, and you can, you can decline to include an article on the warrant, in which case, when you have the meeting where you're ordering the warrant articles, if you want to toss something, as long as it's not a citizen petition, which you must include, or the CPC article, when they do have statutory authority to put that on the warrant, you, you don't have to include.
Okay, so maybe you can just go ahead. So, so in effect, we don't need to vote the one from Climate Action Advisory Board?
No. No, you don't. I mean, they can simply submit it.
Actually, though, we do need to, because you know what? They did not have quorum at their last meeting, and they did not, I think, take a vote to put this on because they weren't able to achieve quorum. So I think we need to do it.
Okay. All right, are we ready for motion?
Yeah.
All right. Move to submit the following articles to the annual town meeting. Adopt the Duer Specialized Stretch Energy Building Code as included in the Board's Packet and including a. Choose Town Officers as included in the Board's Packet. Transfer of Housing Funds as included in the Board's Packet. Hear Reports as included in the Board's Packet. And 250th Celebration as included in the Board's Packet, not to exceed $750,000.
There was a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And thank you.
Good evening.
Okay, so, heading towards the finish line. So the next thing is committee nominations.
Historic District Commission, Walter Clay of 675 Sudbury Road as an associate member to represent the Planning Board for a term to expire January 1st, 2024. Catherine Mast of 38 Blueberry Lane as a member to represent the Concord Free Public Library for a term to expire January 1st, 2028. William Hoyet of 1123 Monument Street as an associate member to represent the Concord Free Public Library for a term to expire January 1st, 2028. And for West Concord Advisory Committee, Nicole Hammond of 76 Prairie Street for a term to expire April 30th, 2025. And Public Celebrations and Ceremonies Committee, Timothy Taylor of 14 Concord Green, Unit 8. And, okay, that's it.
Okay, and Mr. Dane, I know you had some points to make about this.
I have two comments, or two concerns with regard to the nominations to the Historic District Commission. One is the more general one of the fact that I feel quite strongly, especially when you're dealing with appointments to committees that have had a recent and controversial history, that the appointments be made, first of all, in consultation with the Board, and in particular, I feel that any committee nominations, except the most routine ones, should be brought through the liaison to that committee, and where there is some discretion to be exercised, that the liaison or some other designated person on the Board should have the opportunity to review the qualifications and the suitability of that person for that appointment, and that the nomination should not just come from the committee through the administrative process of the, of the town offices, but that there should be a regular process whereby somebody wants to make an appointment to a committee, they should bring that proposed nomination to the liaison to that committee, and the liaison to that committee should, in many cases, review the credentials of that person, and frequently also interview or have a conversation with that person to determine, especially where you have the situation like the Historic District Commission, where I think there have been some just governance issues there, and some issues about a lack of understanding about the fact that the functions of that committee are quasi-judicial, and in addition to being a design review committee, that they actually have the legal authority, just like the zoning board of appeals and the planning board, to issue legally binding decisions, and to put the town in a position where it may have incurred substantial legal costs in defending those decisions, that there should be a better understanding between the representative of the Board and the appointees about what the expectations are in terms of the larger concerns of the Board with regard to the governance of the town, and it's very important that, it's a very important way to emphasize the fact that the committees and the appointees to those committees are accountable to the Select Board. The second issue here is the fact that the statute, and it is a statute, not a bylaw or a, or a charge for the, for the Historic District Commission specifically states that both the, that states that the nominations are made by five different committees, Planning Board, Library Corporation, and so on and so on, and that in each, the case of each appointment, that the, the Board that makes the nominee is to present the Select Board with two candidates, not one, but to submit, says that, that one member shall be appointed from one of two candidates nominated by the trustees of the Concord Free Public Library Corporation. And there's a similar provision for the appointment of the candidates for the, that are nominated by the Planning Board. In neither case were we presented by, presented with two potential nominees for those positions. Presumably, the point, the purpose of that is so that the Select Board would have a choice as to who to appoint, and we have no basis at this point to make, first of all, we haven't received two nominees for either of those positions, but we also have no basis on which to make a choice between the two that we haven't been presented with. So I, I think on the, and the, and, so I don't think we're in a position to nominate these candidates at this point, and I also think that I would like to see the Board take the time in, in the nearer future to clarify the criteria under which, under which committee appointments are made. I think this is a really important issue, because I think we're making a transition from a time when committee appointments were, you kept hearing from the Board and from committees that it was really hard to find people to serve on committees, and so that anybody who filled out a green card, and his arm could be twisted to do that, and maybe attended a couple of meetings and expressed interest, would automatically get appointed. I think we're now, and I think it's a very good thing that we're in a position where people are starting to feel that these appointments are significant, that it is an honor to serve on a committee, that it is something for which somebody is chosen, and therefore it is something that has value and is important, and that the person who was appointed by the, by the Board to serve on a committee is, has been selected on the merits, and therefore is, both feels that they have the honor of a responsibility, and also that they are, that they are accountable to the appointing authority.
Okay. So I wanted to, thanks, Mr. Dane, I wanted to also note that I had raised the question of the appointment process as outlined in the Enabling Act, and the Chair of the Historic District Commission did write back to me today that he did acknowledge the text in that act, but said that it has not been the practice for quite some time, that these appointments be made this way with the HTC. So, I mean, it does still leave that the, the Act has not been amended, so, you know, we aren't really in compliance here. So there is a technical non-compliance, I believe, in the appointment. Also, I think in your accounting, because we did spend quite a lot of time on the community, the Concord Town Community Committee volunteer process before you joined the Board, and, you know, there's a, the role of the liaison is laid out, and it definitely, it takes a primary role in the recruiting process, a secondary role in the interview process, and then, you know, also a primary role in notifying candidates of their nomination and so forth. But, you know, it is true that the Select Board ultimately is the appointing authority, and that, you know, we, we have in the end to say so if we choose to make it. It's just that it is the majority of the Board, not solely the liaison, that has that responsibility.
I agree with that, but I think in the first instance, if we're going to go through a vetting process and a, potentially an interview process, and I think that's important in this particular case with the Historic District Commission, that there be somebody on the Select Board who does that, because that's not something we can, not something we can, not something we can do as a group.
No, our best practice process is indeed that the liaison participates in interviewing the candidates. So you're right there.
Henry, are you the liaison?
Yes.
I just happened to be.
Okay, so are you, are you preferring if we put that one on hold?
Well, I think the nomination is the nomination. I think the question is about the appointment.
Right.
Well, that's your.
The nominees have been put forward.
They have been put forward, but I don't think we can act on those nominations, and I think that I would ask that the, the appointing authorities provide us with a second candidate, and that we, that I, as liaison, would have the opportunity to have a conversation with these people, to get some idea of their understanding of the situation that the, the HTC is in at this point, and how they view that situation, and whether they are people who might be more amenable to flexibility and being judicious, and understand what the, what, how the situation is going to work out, and how it is not productive for the town to spend large amounts of money on legal fees without good cause, not because the Board, the HTC is necessarily wrong, but they need to have an understanding of how the process will work out, and whether, and it is likely to work out the same way, whether they reach a compromise at this point, or the case comes back to them after the court decides, and then the applicant just files a new application, and they're doing this.
I think you're drilling into a specific case, which I don't want to go there.
Okay, however, I think that's why it is, that's why in a case like this, where the committee has been placed in that position, it's important for new appointees to that, to that committee, have an understanding of the situation, and that there's, there's going to help, they're going to be helpful in resolving those issues.
So the liaison's role is to do interviewing, so you should do that.
I would be, I'd be happy, I'd be happy to do that, but I would also think, wouldn't it not be appropriate, as long as we're going to take the time and trouble to do that, that they actually comply with the statute and give us two nominees?
Well, I believe that that, so the other thing that I was informed about was really the necessity of getting new appointees on the Historic District Commission to ensure that they can achieve quorum and continue to process applications of all kinds, you know, in this coming year, and that they have in fact been down members for some time, and so that, to really, this is sort of at the last minute, in some respect, raising this, this issue. So I do, I would like to say that while you raise some important issues, that we need to try to get resolution quickly. And that it may not involve, I think the other thing is, I don't know the full background in terms of how long it has been since that practice of forwarding two applicants has been actually active. I think it has not been in a very long time.
Well, I have a suggestion.
Maybe even in like 25, 30 years.
Okay, but I have a suggestion here that I think would help. You have here two nominees to represent the Concord Free Public Library, one as an associate and one as.
No, but there's supposed to be two fall candidates, and so there is a possible way forward.
I understand that, but there's a.
There's a possible way.
That at least proceed with the interviews of these two people, is what I'm saying, and.
I could do that, but the point is, we keep, we keep allowing situations to arise, because people wait till the last minute, and then we're under a great deal of pressure to make the wrong decision, just because people have not thought ahead, and I don't, I.
Well, I don't know, I think that the people might feel the opposite about that, in that, you know, they're putting forward candidates as they have always done, and then it turns out, you know, that we have folks that are sticklers about the Act, and, you know, look back at that, and now we're imposing that new, to them, restriction.
Do we have a grace period where we could say, when the next people come up for renewal, that was when we would institute?
Well, I would like to learn more about the background of this, too, and whether this has ever been, well, yeah, and also just about the, how appointments have actually functioned in the HTC over this, the last several decades.
Regardless of.
I mean, the statutes, you know, from 1962, I think it is, or something like that? And, and so, I mean, you know, it's a 60-year-old statute, and it could have been that 50 years ago, they stopped doing this. We don't know.
You know, they know how to read, don't they?
No, but I'm just saying, it may have proved to be impractical, and that now the institutional memory's been lost, you know, and it's our institutional memory, theirs, we don't know which, but basically, why is it?
Well, there is.
That we are not doing this? And I think that it has been the recent practice, because I don't recall this process ever.
But you were the one who pointed it out.
I know, but that's because I was looking at the.
Because you know how to read.
But that's, it's, but I also don't have the institutional memory to know whether what I'm reading is relevant or not anymore.
But I have, you see, but I do have two issues, and one is.
I know, it's a legal thing.
No, no, it's not just a legal thing, I think the issue is also, we're put in a position where we are asked to make a choice without having any advance notice of that these appointments were coming, or who they were going to be, or have any opportunity to give due consideration to these appointments that are very significant at this point.
No, I think as liaison, you should be involved, and I think that comes down to a relationship with the Chair.
And the last, no, in this, it's interesting in this case, because the appointments at least did not come directly from the HTC. They came from the appointing committees, one of which was the Library Corporation, and the other was the Planning Board, which has, you know, staff, they, they made the appointments, although it could be that the suggestions as to who to nominate were made to the Library Corporation by the HTC.
Sure.
Yeah, but I don't know where they came from.
That wouldn't be surprising at all.
But, so, but the point is that, is that, is the technical thing, and the other is the fact that's much more important to me, that we, that we didn't have advance notice and have the opportunity to review the qualifications and the temperament, if you will, of the proposed candidates.
Weren't these candidates discussed at an HTC meeting?
I have no idea.
Well, you're the liaison. I mean, that's the thing, that's, that's the liaison responsibility, I, I don't, anyway, I think we need to move forward, I think that we also need to quickly resolve this so that we have a functioning HTC.
You know, can I just make a comment? One of the things that I ran into when I was establishing the White Pond Task Force is I wanted to make sure that there were people outside of the White Pond neighborhood, because it's a town resource, it's a town committee, and I wanted to get the town. it's a town resource, it's a town committee, and I wanted to get the town view of the problem and town involvement. And so with the, with this particular committee, one of the things I would like to see is people on the committee that are living outside of historic districts as maybe one criteria to use for a balanced commission. So if, if we put a process forward where the select board actually has a more active role in these appointments, that's one thing that would be on my mind.
Okay. I think we need to move to appointments.
Okay. Move to appoint Tom Martin of 32 Lowell Road for a retroactive corrective appointment and to be exempted from term limits set out in APP number 10, section 7B, from June 1st, 2021, through May 31st, 2024, and Hillary Taylor of 336 Baker Avenue, business address for a retroactive corrective appointment and to be exempted from the residential requirements of APP 10, section 7E, from June 1st, 2021, through May 31st, 2024, to the Concord Cultural Council.
Okay. And?
Okay. You want me to go through all of them?
Yeah, I don't think we're going to take separate votes.
Move to appoint Cato Anderson of 14 Park Lane for a second term to expire April 30th, 2025. Marie Foley of 8 Lakeview Drive for a second term to expire May 31st, 2024. Mark Martinez of 66 Alfred Circle for a second term to expire April 30th, 2023. Jan Turnquist of 106 Kenny Lane for a second term to expire April 30th, 2025. Jennifer Schuneman of 63 Cedar Way for a second term to expire May 31st, 2024. Stephen Verrell of 415 Wheeler Road for a second term to expire April 30th, 2023. Dawn Renner of 39 Revolutionary Road for a second term to expire April 30th, 2025. And Beth Williams is town staff member for a second term to expire April 30th, 2023, to the Economic Vitality Committee.
I think the address for Jennifer Schuneman needs to be updated. I think that's her old address, but that's, that can be done administratively.
Okay.
And, and is Beth Williams, is that the right date, April 30th, 2023?
So what's happened is that the initial economic vitality appointments were made with, you know, all terminating in the same date. So now, as they're approaching second terms, they're staggering the terms.
All right. Okay. Move to appoint John Coleman of 65 Central Street for a term to expire December 2023 upon completion of the final report to the Select Board to the White Pond Task Force. Move to appoint Peter Blau of 135 Partridge Lane for a term to expire April 30th, 2025, to the Conservation Restriction Stewardship Committee. Move to appoint Margaret Peggy Lanieri of 65 Adewon Road to complete an unexpired term to conclude on May 31st, 2025, and Nicholas Perrinton of 32 Crestbrook Road to complete an unexpired term to conclude on May 31st, 2027, to the Public Ceremonies and Celebrations Committee.
Do I have a second for that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We are at 10:04 PM, and we have liaison reports scheduled. I just, I know we've been good about liaison reports.
Yeah, we have.
I just wonder if we may want to be light on them tonight.
I would be really quick.
Okay, Mary.
Okay. First thing, DPW hired an outside firm called Stantec to do a pavement evaluation, and they recommended $3 to $4 million a year for road improvement. In this budget we saw tonight, we've got $2.65 million. CMLP approved their rates for calendar year 23. They are going to be, even though distribution costs, power costs have all gone up, to the average user, their bill is going to look lower than it was in the second half of calendar year FY '22, because as you remember, we made an adjustment in July of '22 this year to raise rates. So the rate that you're going to see in January of '23 is going to be lower than you saw in December of '22, but higher than you saw in January of '22. So costs are going up, but the rates will look lower than we've been paying for the last six months.
Interesting. Okay. Any other?
Oh, one last thing. And the warrant article for the solar is going to be closer to $10 million eventually.
Wow. Yeah. Okay. Other liaison reports? Key items? I've already reported that we weren't able to get a quorum for the cab and CSAC. Oh, well, the middle school building committee met. So, and just made a list of the alt-deduct items, but did not create a priority, a prioritization of those items yet, but includes potentially removing the fields from the scope of the bid if it's necessary to meet the budget, to the outdoor classroom creation, though leaving accessible area. And then the woodlook ceiling is on that list, as well as the bleachers in the.
So some of the alt-duck thing, alt-deduct things on the list are things that they actually can't do without?
Right. So there would have to be some other process.
That's not really in the spirit.
No, but there would have to be some other process to raise the funds. You know, just as in the high school, there was CC at play to do, you know, to make the playing fields. There are all kinds of, there's CPC money that could be used for outdoor recreation. And then there's also, the school committee is reportedly going to be looking at a warrant article tomorrow to actually appropriate additional capital funds to put those things back in scope.
Yeah. Can we talk about that for a minute, or are you?
Sure. Go ahead.
That concerns me for two reasons. Number one, that wasn't brought up when we had the two meetings with the school committee for tier three capital, and this is arguably a tier three capital because, well, the Capital Planning Task Force defined a tier three capital as any project exceeding a cost of $5 million or a project that has two or more phases totaling $5 million or more. So this is, that would be, and I would argue that that article would be in fact a tier three, an extension of a tier three project, and therefore part of the tier three project, and yet it wasn't brought up in the two conversations we had with the school committee. So it seems to me to be kind of contrary to the spirit of the capital planning process that we all agreed that we would do. So that's my first concern.
Yeah, I mean, to be fair, the school committee actually hasn't even had a meeting to discuss this.
Okay. I'm just saying that.
But it is on the agenda.
Okay.
And for tomorrow night. And, I mean, the argument that I have heard in favor of it was that to do it as part of the project by appropriating additional funds, it would save money in the long term versus doing it as a separate project. So that, that's the rationale that was offered.
Say that again?
But didn't we?
That it would be in effect to save money in the long term by incorporating it into the scope of the, the project in the end by appropriating additional funds.
Well, if that's the case, then when we ask them the question, as we asked them several times, does that number you're giving us include everything? Does it include the furniture? Does it include the windows?
Well, I think as you recall them.
And, and we asked that question, and they didn't say, yes, well, but we're going to have to ask for $2 million later for this or that, because that will save money.
No, I think, remember, the middle school building committee had asked for $12.2 million, and the select board voted to only ask the town for $7.2. So in, in fact, this is kind of going back to somewhere in the middle of that.
No, but it's.
But it's called a compromise. And the, first of all, at that point, we had a quote, or the design bid, the design concept was coming in at 108.3. And in order to get, in order to get up to the 115 million, we would have had to see inflation at 16%.
Right. The whole thing may be moot. I mean, in that, you know.
I know, I know, but this is the time to let.
Right.
All I'm saying is that that the 110 was offered as a, as a compromise, which to me is.
That the select board unilaterally imposed.
Well, it was a compromise between 100,000.
Again, there was no negotiation, right? It was, they submitted a draft warrant article, and.
That was a negotiation, because they asked for, I think, 115.
Right. Right. And, and by action of the select board, it became a 110 total.
That was the negotiation, wasn't it?
That was the negotiation.
It was not a bilateral.
But the real thing was, there was, the, the issue was discussed as to whether that included everything, whatever their number was.
Right. Because the 108 included everything. The 108 number.
The 108.3.
That's right.
Yeah, and, and which is now 108.6.
Right. So that's under 110, so.
Because the 108.3 did not include the bleachers or the woodlook.
All right. 108.6 included everything. So why did the playing fields and all these other stuff have to be?
No, no, this is all just as a, this is all a just-in-case, okay? Because remember, right now, our working budget for total project budget is 108.6. The town is going to be asked for 110. So it's only in the case that bids come out above that, or, or basically have to have scope cut in order to achieve 110.
Right.
That there would ever be any need for additional capital. And so then, basically, this is to deal with the risk that bidders will come in above the current 60% estimate by more than 1.4 million.
Okay. But I thought the whole alt-deduct process was to look for ways, look for our, things that they could take off if the bids were coming in higher.
That's exactly it. So that the project could proceed, so it wouldn't, it wouldn't.
Shouldn't there be enough?
Could be made. Yes.
But couldn't there be enough headroom in there so that?
There could have been enough headroom in there if the budget had been 115, according to the middle school building committee. So, and there wasn't, because it's 110, so now to provide that additional headroom, they're proposing this capital article that would only be used in the case that bids came in higher than 110 for the full scope.
If 108.3 included everything. Okay, if 103, if 108.3 supposedly included everything, and we needed a little bit more headroom in case inflation went up, right?
Yeah.
The little bit more headroom doesn't get you to 115. Like I said before, inflation would have had to been.
They were, they were being, yeah, they were, well, and again, I think now what would, the worst-case scenario would be 111.8, right? If, if they're, because they're proposing $1.8 million article, I think it is.
So how much inflation would you have to have to get from 108?
Oh, I don't know. But I mean, I'm just saying that that's where the endpoint. Anyway, we are getting way into a topic, way beyond the scope of a liaison report.
Well, I asked if we could discuss it, and you said yes. So we were.
So.
I'm going to save my report for another time.
Okay.
It's nothing urgent.
Okay. Henry, do you have something?
No, I don't, I don't work after 10 o'clock.
Okay. All right. Then.
I'll just comment on a couple of things. I attended a number of housing meetings to wrap up the HPP, the Housing Production Plan. The Planning Board talked about three potential articles coming to the 2023 town meeting, the mobile food establishments, fast food restaurants, and combined business residence. The, I also attended the zoning board specifically to follow up on a planning board issue, which had to do with the final approval for the Concord Academy project, and it was considerable amount of time spent on the parking issue, and in fact, a compromise was reached there with the Concord Academy, and the project was approved.
Oh, good.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So moving on to correspondence, I want to acknowledge three pieces of correspondence this week, two in support of the Housing Production Plan, one from the Municipal Affordable Housing Trust, and one from the Concord Housing Foundation, and then one from LeLashur talking about the background for the borrowing for the middle school. So with that, if there's any public comment, yes, you may identify yourself in the room, and also if there's anybody on the Zoom, get ready by raising your hand. Okay.
Thank you. Carlin Reed, 83 Witsen. I want to thank the members of the Select Board who came to the Clerk's reception that we had 10 days ago, I guess it was. We had a lot of fun, and I appreciate you all coming. That was a marvelous event. There was an issue that came up, that came up afterwards, talking about the vote-by-mail application forms. Now, as you know, for the primary and for the state election, they were mailed to everybody, every household by the Secretary of State's office. For this coming special election, it will not be mailed to every home except through, on the backside of the town census form, as I understand. So you got to look for it. Now, it's also posted on the town clerk's webpage about four things down. So in other words, it's not obvious. You have to look for it, and unless there's some special publicity about it, I'm willing to bet we're not going to get the 50% turnout that we have in the last couple of elections. So I just want to let you know about that. Okay? That's it.
Okay. Anyone on the Zoom? Anybody, use your raise hand function. Okay, I don't see anyone, so I would like to adjourn the meeting. So thank you, everyone, for a.